Good evening, being 7:00 PM on January 27, 2014, I'd like to call to order the Board of Selects meeting. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would all stand and remain standing upon completion of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just have an announcement here, proclamation from Governor Deval Patrick. Please be advised that Governor Deval L. Patrick has ordered that the United States flag and the Commonwealth flag be lowered to half staff at all state buildings from sunrise until sunset on Tuesday, January 21, 2014, in honor of Petty Officer 3rd Class Nathan V. Nasa, U.S. Navy of Drake Gett, who died December 30, 2013. If you'd all join me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. All right. So I'll just highlight the agenda here. We'll first have Keith read the mail, then we'll go to public input and member updates. At 7:15, we're scheduled to hear from a couple of town boards, including the Sustainability Committee and the Housing Authority. At 7:30, we have some appointment with town departments, specifically Police and Fire, about some of their staff. At 7:45, we have a discussion about Common Foods, Littleton Sub Shop, regarding their liquor license. At 8 o'clock, we'll meet with the Permanent Municipal Building Committee. At 8:30, we're scheduled to hear from the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget, also known as Town Accountant. And at 9 o'clock, we have the Consent Agenda Minister's Approval. At 9:05, we are scheduled for executive session for strategy with respect to location. With that, Keith?
Mr. Chairman, just a few items in the packet. First, we have a letter from the Littleton Public Schools announcing that Littleton High School has been re-accredited and that an awful lot of work went into that effort, and so our congratulations to the high school and to the school department. Next, we have a schedule from the Devens Regional Household Hazardous Waste Collection Center. Littleton, as you know, is one of the communities involved in that regional facility that's located at Devens, and they are announcing a number of collection dates during 2014 when folks from Littleton can bring their household hazardous waste. We'll have those dates posted at the website. Also, we have a letter from the Littleton Council on Aging with a request for an AED, Automated Electronic Diffusor, to be located on their end of the building. And I know we had some initial feedback to that.
Yeah, Alex, would you like to address that letter?
Well, yeah, I think that is really a worthwhile cause, and I was moved by it, I guess, and offered to do my part in the donation to buy the diffusor later, and hopefully we can get other people to join in and get those folks a diffusor later.
Okay. What is the cost? Do you know? Does anybody?
Chief would know.
Sorry, what was that?
What's an AED cost, retail? What would they be looking to spend?
Between three and five grand.
Really? Oh, okay.
So there's still plenty of funding opportunities. I'm not quite covering all of them.
Yeah, can we get naming rights? Offer naming rights or anything next to it?
Well, pause for a pledge drive.
It's a great cause, and if anybody, we have to go through all the procedures for accepting donations and all that stuff, but I've made my pledge, and I hope others will too.
All right, thank you. We'll come back. You'll have more when we get to member updates, and I just wanted to, I knew you did that, so I just wanted to pull aside for that. So we're going to go to public input now, and it's clear that we have some people interested in talking tonight, and from my understanding, that people are here to talk about the budget and the way the police station is going to be financed.
Fire.
Oh, fire station, yeah, sorry. So we're all ears. The one thing, we do have a full agenda tonight, and I support hearing all different aspects, and if you're going to get up and restate something that's already been said, maybe it's more efficient to just say, "I agree with so-and-so," rather than going into a lengthy dissertation of repeating what's already been said. So with that, I'll open it up, and who'd like to go first? Jerry was up first, firsthand, I saw.
Jerry Delpiori, New State Road, this has got nothing to do with the fire station, but rather with the Fletcher land. I was reading the newspaper article that was published on, let's see, the 16th, and I think it's really pretty sad that in six years, this town could not come up with a zoning law that could both preserve farmland and provide limited commercial development. We all know that property is a lousy place for houses, but that's what we're going to end up with if we're not careful. And at some point, if the Fletchers are going to look to sell, I think it would be well worth this town's while to look into purchasing the land, because if they turn it over to another developer, we may end up with nothing but a whole line of houses down the street. And that's all I want to say, that I think it's really pretty sad that we can't come to compromise.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Jerry. Vera?
What I want to say is...
For the record, I'm sorry, I didn't call Jerry on it, but you know, for the record, let's try to go with formalities. Yeah, thank you.
I'm speaking for a number of people, and I'm going to give each of you one of these. The undersigned residents of Littleton urge reconsideration of the option chosen by the Board of Selectmen to fund construction of a new fire station, and we believe the decision is not in the best financial interest of taxpayers in Littleton. The finance staff provided three options for funding this process, yet the BOs, by a vote of three to two, chose to table two of the options and dealt with only one, which was not the option recommended by the financial staff. The funding option chosen by the BOs would fund the fire station project entirely from the levy limit, that is, the existing operating budget. Due to available and anticipated funds within that budget, the earliest time, the funds could be sought for the $600,000 design phase in May 2016, with the funding requests for construction phase pushed out to May 2017. Experience shows that delaying large capital projects to future years inevitably incurs inflated costs, and a $6 million project this year becomes a $7 million project in short of it. The option chosen by the BOs depends in large part on money becoming available with the operating budget, due to paying down debt and reduction on money needed to service the debt. But allocating all money to one large project, the fire station, excludes other deserving and necessary capital and capital maintenance projects, as well as any unplanned emergency capital needs from funding within the levy. This forces departments to delay funding requests or seek funds outside the levy, either through debt exclusions that increase down town debt or through an operational override. One member of the BOs suggested that departments that do not have capital plans and works need to fend for themselves via an override process. Here's what this means to the taxpayer. The amount of any override permanently increases the tax base. Then the 2.5% tax increase allowed per year is then based on the increased base, resulting in a better compounding tax base. So contrary to the assertion of some members of the BOs, this option gives taxpayers a break, it actually has a compounding and opposite effect. Given the numerous economic capital and budgetary pressures facing the town, the option chosen by the BOs will drive up taxes, destabilize our town budget, and force an operational override that will permanently set taxes at a higher starting point. Adding to the problem is the fact that tax rates have been set, so there's no headroom to assist residential taxpayers in the future. Members of the town's board assessors and the finance team have cautionfully short-sighted and potentially damaging the option. This is an option in violation of our financial policy adopted October 21, 2013, which states, quote, "Unless an alternative funding plan is developed, debt exclusion should be utilized when borrowing major capital projects, such as new construction from major renovations to existing facilities." Starving numerous capital projects of funding by dedicated 100% money becoming available to a single large capital project is not a viable alternative funding plan. In the end, it is the voter, not the selectmen, who has decided if our station's right for the town, and if so, how it should be funded. A major capital expenditure, such as that for the fire station, should be voted on at the polls with 2,000 to 3,000 voters winning the vote, not buried inside the operating budget detail meeting with 200 to 300 voters present. Inasmuch as it is apparent that the BOs is not including or integrating any other capital items in their consideration, we are asking the Board of Selectmen to rescind their choice of options and return to a more comprehensive fiscal plan. We also request that copy of this letter, including the official minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to present our analysis and objections. Minutes ensue, Beverly Seer, Linda Catron, Vera Score, Henry Crystal, Kathy Kaufman, Tom Coughlin, James Stewart, and Hunter.
Well, thank you. That was well presented and clear. Yeah, there were a few things that maybe we need clarification, but I don't think right now we need to get into those. I don't know if there's anybody else who wants to respond to this, or if we want to just take all, take all comments first, and does anyone have a response, or take all comments? Okay. Did you, Demel, did you get a copy?
I have a copy.
Okay, all right, okay. Mr. McCray?
Following your suggestion, I agree completely.
Yes, sir.
Bartlett Harvey Mill Road, I also agree with Vera. I want to state in addition that the high school is now at its student capacity. The rising grades are all bigger than any of the grades that are there, and whether the school committee has asked for it or not, I believe that in addition to the high school is an appropriate thing for the town to consider in the future.
Ms. Swann?
Thank you. Chris Simone, 93, Whitcomb. I wholeheartedly agree as well with the direction and spirit of Vera's letter. And I also just wanted to speak on something completely unrelated, and express gratitude for actually nearby Emerson Hospital, where I think really well-served. I've been thinking about it today, three years ago. Today, my dad lost his fight against cancer, and though he had a lot of really quality care in Boston, he had amazing and compassionate care, especially at the end of his life, at Emerson Hospital. And we're really well-served to have that nearby, and we're well-served to keep that a strong and healthy institution available to us. They have a foundation that, of course, they accept donations to Emerson Healthcare Foundation, 133 Old Road to Nine Acre Corner in Concord, Mass. But you can find it on Emerson Hospital's website, as far as how to give to their foundation, and hope that everybody does. We're really well-served to have that quality of institution so close by.
Yes, sir.
Tom Coughlin, Kaufman Road. I just want to add to the, we have, due to the FinCom, we have an excellent bond rating, and I don't see us jeopardize that in the way we're funding this through Vera's letter. Thank you.
Before, I'm going to see if there's anybody else here before we go back to repeat. Seeing none, Mr. Delpiori.
Jerry Delpiori, New State Road. This reminds me, didn't we do the same thing with the high school? And in the end, things started to really hurt us or squeeze us for funds in future years? So we do have some precedent as to what this can cause, one way or the other.
Well, that's a good point, Jerry, and we've been talking about that. And, you know, I think what, I don't know if the board has anything, but I think, you know, important thing is, I know that the FinCom has been looking for our guidance, and we sent them some guidance, and I think it's, we should be hearing back from them soon about what they think about this, and then, you know, once we get that and any other further analysis from staff, we can see where we stand on that decision. So I think we have a joint, yeah, we have a joint meeting coming up with FinCom next week, I believe, where it could come up.
Yeah, the date offered is next Tuesday, February 4.
We've got to decide pretty quick.
For joint meeting with the selectmen, FinCom, and school.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Are we going to be able to discuss this further when we get into the budget, or we're going to discuss this now, or what was your intent with this discussion?
My intent is to receive the input and understand that we have this letter that, you know, was well-written and well, you know, analysis. I think there's, you know, there's one point I want to make about the recommendation from the financial staff, and I'm not going to get into it next to now, that was, there was a detail of the matter, that it was, but I think we will come back to it at another time. I don't see a discussion specifically on the capital, I see a capital budget update, and we can get into a little bit of that point, but I think what my intent was to see, hear back from FinCom, and we should get some information from staff as well, and then we can revisit the idea. That was my thought. If you're, I'm welcome, do we hear anything else, though?
I sort of took our vote, and maybe we'd have to clarify it to FinCom, our vote as our input and instructions to FinCom about how we were going to proceed.
Well, right now, they have the, they have our, they have the direction, I think, rather than send mixed messages, we, you know, they know this is sub, I mean, Mr. McCray's here, and he certainly passed on, he has some opinions, we had quite a lengthy discussion on it before the meeting, and, you know, he has a grasp, and I think, you know, wait and hear, hear back from them. I don't know if we want to start changing votes and things like that. We have, you know, one way that we could possibly go that's been voted so far, and hear what people feel on that, so that we have clear, something clear for the FinCom and other departments to talk about.
That was going to be part of the FinCom meeting on the 4th.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't think we need, we don't have anything, we don't have an agenda item to make that decision now, and I don't see anything tonight that would fit that lengthy of a discussion, so I think we have something, we have that coming up, and we have a decision for them to talk about, and let's get back from them, and we can reconsider at a later date.
We've got one more customer.
Yeah, yeah. I was just waiting for Alex to give an Alex the opportunity to reply.
I wanted to see how you want to proceed with it.
Okay, okay. Kathy?
Kathy Kaufman, 16 Kaufman Road. I guess that was my question, is the audience going to be able to participate when you get to that item on your agenda, or is it going to be closed?
Tonight?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it on the agenda tonight, as far as discussing the fire station. There's a couple of updates, there are presentations, there weren't any debates discussed about it.
Nothing about the funding of...
There's not a, there's not a, there's nothing scheduled for to discuss tonight, right?
One of the comments I have is, there's over $3 million in requests from various departments for this capital fund within the levy, and we're only going to be spending 1.8 million on it. And if we take $600,000 of that and give it to one item, no matter what it is, that leaves very little for departments, which I used to be part of, to get their little items funded, not little, but of $25,000 here and $5,000 there. They're not going to have any money this year for many needed items, or going forward, if we ever use this type of a, within the levy for that larger project.
I think there's some valid points made, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of things to discuss, and I think, as far as I'm concerned, we're...
$600,000 wasn't part of the capital plan.
Yeah, this, I don't want to get into details now, I think we're trying to take some input, we understand that, these people have a different opinion than what we were, what we tried to do that night was to respond to other residents that we've heard that, you know, not raise taxes, and that we were trying to respond to, and so now we have another opinion, and we'll get the opinion from FinCom, and we can discuss, yeah? Anybody else on that? Anybody else for public input? Mr. Crystal?
Henry Crystal, Mill Road. I just, I also want to agree in accepting your request that we don't duplicate what's already been said. I support entirely what Vera has said. I am concerned about why we would need to split the $600,000, though, from the $6 million. If we need a police station, and I think most people think we do...
Fire station.
Yeah, sorry.
We're on the same wavelength, Vera.
Fire station. Then why isn't, don't we just have a price? We have a need, we have a specificity, and then there's a price. And that's the issue before the town, and we're going to vote on 7 million, or 7 and 1/2 million, whatever it is, and it's to get the fire station built. I don't see the need for distinction between an engineering study and the project itself.
Which engineering study?
For the...
The design.
$600,000. It's a design program, I don't know.
That's a very good question.
I mean, I don't understand the term.
Typically, typically what we've done with other projects is the design portion gets you through to bidding, where we have an actual price. So while we're estimating that it would be about $6 million for construction, we're not sure, and we haven't gotten the engineering work done yet. So we'll do the engineering first, and then we come back to town meeting with a firm price of what the bids are, so that they can authorize that.
But I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, you're saying, hear me, about the capital projects, I mean, the capital money, the 1.8 that we're going to be talking about tonight? I don't think, at our last meeting, we kind of all agreed not to even include that in the cap. I mean, I made a suggestion to put 100,000 into the, either set it aside for the up-and-coming project, but the 600,000 isn't included in our cap discussion, so...
Yeah, yeah. So, and I just want to make the board's, you know, the board's position clear, and what we, what was voted three to two the other day. We hear from people, taxes are going up, we hear that, we hear from seniors, and a lot who have spoken, contrary to what we would have expect here. You know, seniors are always saying, "Taxes are going up, taxes are going up," and, you know, we were responding to that. I mean, it's not, we weren't working in a bubble here, trying to say, "Hey, how can we stick it?" We were acting at the time on the information that we had. So this is, that, I mean, I think it was pretty noble, the way we were, you know, our line of questioning, and we have another opinion now, so I think we'll go on from there. Do you have something?
Yeah, go ahead. I think this is actually a larger discussion, not about a fire station, it's about whether this type of financial policy is an advisable policy, given what we have in front of us over the next 10 years or so. So I, you know, I don't want to, well, I guess we have to confuse it with the fire station, but this, what I heard in this letter was more about the strategies of financing than support or lack of support for a particular project.
And that's the point we were trying to make last time, and the fire station is the hot, is the hot potato right now, because that's the project before us, with no other project before us, that's kind of where we're at. But yeah, you're right, it is more of a global thing. I'd like to move on quickly from this, so do you have something new, Mr. Simone, or did you, yeah, okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I agree with Selectmen McCurdy that this is really a fiscal security, fiscal transparency issue before it is one about a specific project, in this case, the fire station. But with respect to that, can you clarify how the taxpayer benefits? Because it seems like, from the facts we just heard, the cost may go up by deferring in the manner we have, that's a taxpayer impact. We could get forced into a series of overrides, operational-type overrides, and just disruptive governance, you know, pitting one group against the other, be it park and rec against schools, schools against COA. That has taxpayer consequence, and it takes the taxpayer out of the decision, which is the stated policy of the town, is to go by debt exclusion, which is a vote. In this case, it was a vote of five, really three.
No, there were five people who voted, yes.
But the less that the taxpayer is involved, the greater the taxpayer impact is likely to be.
Okay.
So if you could clarify how the taxpayer wins under that proposed scenario?
I will. The taxpayer wins by taxes do not go up now, and that's what we're hearing, do not raise taxes. There are a lot of moving parts, we knew that when we, when we voted it, and we know that now, and it's been very well-spoken tonight about all the moving parts. So if you want to consider that the nuclear option of an override, why would we do that now when we don't really have to? We have a way of doing it, not doing it, not doing it now, and I'm answering your questions, I gave you the chance. So you asked me how it benefits, and the answer is, in the short term, to say it again, is that the taxes don't go up now. Is it short-sighted? Maybe it is, there were some valid points made tonight, and we need to analyze those, and I think the board is committed to analyzing those and looking at it further. So we're not going to make a decision tonight, we're going to wait to hear from FinCom, so... Yes, Mr. Delpiori, will we go on, or?
One other question. If this is initially, it's going to be a borrowing, one way or the other, I assume we're not going to pay for all seven.
Right, yeah.
If the borrowing is done under the levy limit right now, and then two, three years down the road, you decide that that's not workable, at that point, can you take a debt exclusion on the unpaid debt?
Let me just make one question, we can't do it under the Borrowing Authority right now, okay? That's why we're waiting, and that's why we propose to wait until 2016, until something rolls off, and we can fit it under the Borrowing Authority, or whatever, Borrowing Limit, whatever you want to call it.
Inside the levy.
And then inside the levy, right. And afterwards, Bonnie, can you refinance debt outside? Once it's, once it's inside, can you refinance, move it outside? I mean, that, talk about a nuclear option, that might be it, but is that possible?
The last time I checked was about three or four years ago with DOR, and at that point, you could. I'd have to see if they've updated any of the laws to make changes for that, but yes.
Because that's not the nuclear option, that gives you an option if you're too tightly squeezed, because the thing with the debt...
Safety valve, maybe, rather than a nuclear option.
Right, because the whole idea of a debt exclusion is, once the debt's paid off, that drops off, and it's not a permanent addition to the tax base. At least, that's my understanding of debt exclusion.
You know, I think next time we talk about, we will, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of moving parts that a lot of people don't, you know, I always worry little nuances and everything, and so maybe we'll have a better explanation of how everything works next time we talk about it. All right, anybody else? Anything new? Nothing new in town? All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. We'll move on here to member updates. As usual, we'll move to Alex first.
So I don't have anything, Joe.
Nothing? Joe?
Just one thing, I think you've made it known that, Mr. Chairman, that you will not be running again this year. I just, I'll go into it in more detail when we have our last meeting, but I certainly want to thank you for your years of dedication and thoughtfulness for this town, on this board, and the board of health, they've done an outstanding job, and I want to thank you for that, and hope that you come back in the future.
Thank you, Joe. I, we will talk, I don't want to take a lot of time for campaign now, but I do appreciate that, and I do look to you for a lot of guidance, and I'll have some nice things to say about you on that day, too. Joe?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to let everyone know that, let everyone know that Saturday, February 1st, it's Take Your Child to the Library Day. Our library right here, from 10 to 4, will be open. There's also, in addition to activities, there, there will be a cookie sale by the Friends of the Library, so I think it's for $5, you can load up a little container with home-baked cookies. So if you have some time on...
home-baked cookies. So if you have some time on Saturday, swing by the library, with or without children.
Two things. We had a member have some travel issues with, possibly on the February 10th. Is that the interview?
Yes, yeah.
Did we reschedule that, or have we talked about it?
We did talk. Keith and I were talking about agendas today when that, after that came up. And we want to have a discussion. We have a couple of other things going on that February 10th that have to be advertised. So the deadline for advertising is not until Friday. So we, Keith and I were talking, we can talk about it tonight.
Yeah, for the 24th, actually.
For the 24th.
Yeah.
So we can go over that later, I think.
Specifically for the interview, right?
Right, right. So we can go over that later. I don't think we have a lot of people here waiting to see some things going on. But we do have that to talk about tonight. So Keith, let's not, unless you want to do it now. I mean, so there's two items that we have to do, all right.
Would all five be able to attend the, a meeting on February 24th? And would you, and number six, could you, 24th instead of the 10th? Yes, okay. Then, if so, then the question would be, what time do you want to do that? Because we've got two public hearings that are right now tentatively scheduled for the 24th. And I don't want to stick them at, right in the middle of...
Right. And once those are advertised, they have to be held at that time, or at least opened at that time.
So I'd like you to decide first what time you want the interview to be done, and then we will, we will have the public hearings take place. I would suggest after. Do the interview, in my recommendation...
So here's the other thing, though.
...appear in the meeting, and we'll do the...
That person with said traveling, possible traveling conflict also may want to be involved in the February 10th discussion. So not having a guarantee being that, would that said person like to delay that also?
No, that said person should be back. I'm just concerned about traffic and snow.
Right.
But my flight is to land at 4:40. And I've got a young man driving me home, so I'm sure he'll drive quickly. So I should be here for 7:00.
But do you want to guarantee you're here for that, that part of it?
Hope springs eternal. I'm quite sure I'll be here.
Okay, all right. But directly reflect that we didn't squeeze Jenna out of the conversation.
Charming.
And we got some, what, so the interview on the 24th?
The 10th would be establishing questions.
Right, okay.
And we'll try to put that, we'll put that later, just to provide a little extra wiggle room.
Yeah. And then with respect to establishing the questions, we probably can also establish how long we think the interview's going to run, would you say?
Well, I was, when we were looking at the agenda today, I was kind of of the other opinion that we would have the public hearings first, get those out of the way, and then we could go, because I just, I don't know.
What are the two public hearings?
There's one for...
Neshoba Valley tubing, and a beer and wine package or license for Gary Archer's.
So that's at least an hour combined, those two. And then my thing is, we probably shouldn't put anything else on that night.
I've participated in a lot of interviews with boards, and you want, you want to be, you want to pick the most alert time of your evening for that, for that interview.
Firstly.
And can we, could we schedule it so that if we aren't done by that amount of time, we can have a continuation at the March 10th meeting?
Second interview, or?
Yeah.
You've got to block out 90 minutes.
We can always open the public hearing and table it and keep going.
Right.
I'd say try, I'd say we would push to, my opinion would be, we'd keep going with the interview to finish that one night, and we'd push the other stuff out, if we went on.
Right.
But those public hearings have to happen on the day they're posted.
Be opened.
Yes.
Be opened.
They have to be, they have to be open. But if we don't think, the other option is, if we don't think that we can do them justice, then those hearings get pushed off to March 10th.
Oh, fine, okay.
So we can also do, we can also do that.
Because we shouldn't be doing anything else. We have those three things.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's probably easier all around, and for expectations, if we just reschedule those public hearings for...
Well, we can do one. Do, maybe do the Archer one.
Yeah, that one I see going.
You know, later on. I mean, if we start, if we start at 7...
Yeah, that's going to be a shorter, you're...
I can't see, yeah, I can't see anything going more than an hour and a half.
Okay, we'll do that.
So you want to do public input early and stuff, and then Archer at 7:15, and Lisa at 7:30?
No, I think you need to have the public hearing after, after your interview.
So 7:15, 8:15?
8:30.
7:15 to 8:30, okay.
No, the pub, no, I think the public hearing should be no sooner than 8:30.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, the only thing is, we finish our rally with sitting here, because you can't open it.
We'll have other things up here, gentlemen.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right. And the last thing, at our last meeting, when we were speaking of code of conduct and the ethics policy, I made mention of emails in regards to a letter that Alex had sent about the, having a full-time employee working for him. I apologize to the board, because I didn't have copies of the emails, but I want to pass them out now so the entire board has it. And I'll make sure that it's on file with the Board of Selectmen also. And you'll be able to see exactly what I was talking about in these emails. It's an email from me to Mr. Bergman, Town Council, and Alex, and their responses are attached, in regards to the, the letter Alex said was on file with the Board of Selectmen. That's all I have.
All right. Regarding this, Joe, obviously Alex, give you a moment. Here we are. This has been coming up a couple of times, and I think we need to put it to bed. And there's a couple of ways to do it, because it seems like whenever ethics come up, this kind of creeps in. And I think we need to either put it to bed. And to summarize what, I understand what happened at the last meeting, is that you quoted a time on, at April 8th, where Alex said he had a letter saying that he made a disclosure about one of his employees. You followed up with that and didn't find any evidence of the letter that he said. It was on file.
Right in the emails, yeah.
Yep. And we asked Alex, and I don't, I wasn't satisfied with the answer. It was kind of, there was no yes, no about it. And we kind of left it hanging, and I knew it was going to rear its ugly head again. So we, you know, we can either say, look, the board's just satisfied that, you know, the question was asked and not answered, you know, or was answered, and put it to bed. We can also, you know, under the ethics policy, there's no real process. But I've always said that you could always have a hearing and just find out if someone's in violation of that, or, you know, hold someone, I don't know what, you know, censure somebody or something like that. But I think we should figure out if we're going to just let this go where it is, and maybe we could also make a statement that whether or not we are satisfied with the answer or not. But whatever we do, we got to, we got to put it to the press. I just don't like it coming up so frequently, so. I'll take the board's opinion after, you know, we can let Alex respond if you'd like to.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you're correct. It is coming up way too often. And I'm going to, I actually was preparing myself to address this, because you had asked for our counterproposal to Mr. Carr's proposal for nepotism, I guess you would call it. But this is something very different.
It wasn't nepotism, Alex.
No, no, wait, wait, wait. I want to try and maintain order here tonight. I know, I know we've been doing, we're doing a much better job. So the issue at hand is, what Alex is talking about, there was, there was a part of the ethics that we were, you had proposed, we're talking about that. And you had one way of doing it, you had one way of doing it. And I asked to come up with, you know, both in writing, so that we can discuss them. We're not talking about ethics policy tonight. We're talking about, you know, this actual potential violation. And it's, you know, I'll leave it up to you again, Alex, to, to go whichever way you want with this. You know, the question was answered. And, you know, I wasn't satisfied, so we can, you can either try and answer it again tonight, or you can just tell us, you know, you'd rather move on. So, but I think as far as the ethics...
And I will address specifically, you know, what he's talking about.
Okay.
Is that, number one, is that, for some reason, I don't know, Mr. Carr doesn't seem to think that I'm taking the matter seriously. And in fact, immediately following his previous allegation, I guess there's no other way to put it, I reported to the Ethics Commission and went through all the facts, went through all the records, and I have stated this before. They gave me advice thereon, which I followed immediately. Unfortunately, it took four months for them to give me that advice in writing. You now have that. So that matter of a conflict of interest was taken with the utmost of seriousness. What hasn't happened is that the state is very clear about what happens to somebody if they violate the ethics code. And they can fine somewhere in the thousands of dollars for it. It's one phone call. It can be anonymous. You call them, they conduct an investigation. Now, because that I would be implicated in the investigation, they would notify me. They have not notified me. So if the idea here is compliance, and in fact, there is an independent party that can look at this without biases or prejudices in any way, and go through all the records and all the things that did happen, instead of just calling out one email here and one statement there, and review it and investigate it, and I'm happy to have them do that. And I'm happy to share the results with this board. I don't have anything to hide here. And I am a little fed up with the idea that there is something to hide here. I'm a little fed up with the idea that I am involuntarily proceeding so that I can break the ethics code or the ethics laws of this state. Nothing could be further from the truth. Nothing. And I will stand on that record, and I will put everything I have in front of the Ethics Commission, and they can make their determination. But where it has to stop, because it keeps going back and forth and back and forth, is with innuendos and suggestions and all of this stuff that really doesn't get anything done, except divert our time, create animosity between board members. And not only that, it belittles our ethics policy, which, by the way, was founded on the idea that most people that conduct themselves, try to conduct themselves in a way they would like to comply. And the policy was crafted and created for the sole purpose of providing transparency, which it has done, for the sole purpose of providing awareness, which it has done. And it was never intended to be a tool by which two people who don't agree on something begin to bash each other with. The policy has worked. It's worked to a T. I brought a matter to Mr. Carr's attention. He went to the Ethics Commission, got a ruling, came back, filed the papers. It worked, okay? I didn't spend a lot of time after that disputing the facts, or trying to come up with something else, or digging out this email and connecting it with that email, or doing whatever to make it work. The system works. The policy works. Compliance is being achieved. There is no violation occurring here. And that's what the truth is. And that's why this needs to be dropped.
Okay. I hear from one side that says there's a specific instance, and I hear from you saying that you're in compliance. And, you know, maybe you are now in compliance with this Mr., with your employee here. I think the issue is not really compliance right now. The issue is that it was, it was said by Jim that, and the evidence is here and on LCTV, this is what he stated, on April 8th, you said that you had a letter on file for a firefighter that was working for you, and that that letter was on file with the Board of Selectmen and Town Council. And Jim said he asked, he followed up on that and didn't find it. So the question is, you know, more not about compliance, about your statement on April 8th, that you had that letter on file, and it was not found. So that's where we're at right now. Not as far as compliance, but...
And the purpose of that is what?
Is to, I guess, to see if you, you did not, you didn't, no, you did not, whether or not you lied, because you said that the file was...
So what's going on here is an allegation of lying?
Yes. I guess that's what it would be. It says, because it says on April 8th, you said one thing, and you, okay. So would you like to address this? Right, it is a little different. Okay. So now that you understand where we're coming from, would you like to address that?
So that in itself is a violation of the code of conduct, because members of the Board of Selectmen don't sit here and call each other liars.
Well, we're giving you the opportunity. The question's being raised. The question's saying...
I have to clarify. I gave you everything you need. Turned me into the Ethics Commission, instruct him to turn all the evidence over to the Ethics Commission, and I will provide you with whatever the result of that is.
Was that done after April 8th or on April 8th? Before April 8th? Because you said it was done on April 8th, Alex. That's what we're trying to get to. Was it done on April 8th, or was it done before that?
I don't know what you are trying to get at.
I'm getting at, on April 8th, you said...
You want to conduct a hearing about whether somebody thinks I lied.
I don't want to conduct, I want to put it to bed, but I'm just saying, you haven't answered the question. On April 8th, you said one thing, and that was, that was found not to be on file. So do you have a response to that? That you, you know, you, the stuff, you said this stuff was on file, and it wasn't found on file.
I have a response that I did not lie to anybody. And if you think I lied, then let's have at it, my friend. Get your hearing together, and we'll go through it.
I never said you lied. I said, I asked for clarification on the thing that you said that was found not to be on the record. Can you explain that? Why was, you said it was on record, and it wasn't found to be on record?
What is the basis for the allegation of lying?
The basis is that you said one thing on April 8th, and that it wasn't found. You said a letter was on file, and it wasn't found. I didn't say you lied. I'm just saying this is what Jim has turned up, that this letter was said to be on file, and it wasn't found. That's what, that's where we're at right now. So.
Do you want to make a suggestion?
Of course.
Please, make a suggestion to break the stranglehold of ridiculousness. Let's just move on. If that's not your suggestion, I'm sorry. I stole your thunder.
You stole.
Sorry.
Couple of points. Jimmy has made his case. He gave everybody something. It's going to be on file. I think the more that we go on and on and on in this, it takes away from all the important work we have to do. And if it's okay with this board, I'd like to put it to rest. I mean, he's made his case. You have documentation there. It can be read. We could be doing this forever. Well, I think, I think, what I, all I wanted to do was, I stated something at our last meeting. I wanted to make sure the board was informed, you know. And when we start talking about ethics and code of conduct, you know, we need to make sure that we address issues like this. When a member says, I gave a letter written by Town Council to the Board of Selectmen, and there is no letter, that should be addressed in our policies. You can call it lying, you can call it misrepresentation, you can call it anything you want. But if it's not in our policy or our code of conduct, that when someone says there's a letter written by Town Council on file with the Board of Selectmen, and there's nothing there, it just should be addressed in our policy. So I gave this to the board, so you, in our next meeting, because I know this is going to be coming up, can be educated as to what I was talking about at our last meeting.
So is your goal compliance?
My goal is to make sure that anybody sitting at this table tells the truth to not only other board members, but to the citizens of the town. And if we do that through a policy, then yes, then I guess that's what we're looking for, is compliance. Yes.
You were about to say something before Joe, Joe took the floor. So I'm not, you know, I just, it's going back and forth. We're not getting the answers to the question at hand. I'll give Alex...
I didn't ever get the question. Until, until, until someone says, you know what, there is no letter. I said it, but I didn't mean it, you know.
Right. Or the letters were produced, right. So Alex...
So I think, I think to your, to your case of, let's end this madness, it's really not madness. It has to do with the conduct of this board.
I am...
And we're seeing a perfectly good example of what it shouldn't be when board members are accusing other board members of lying, absent of fact.
Alex, let's, all you need to do is go back and review this meeting when you said, all you said, I asked a question, and go back...
Isn't old saying, Mr. Carr, those who live in glass houses should not be throwing stones?
By all means, by all means, whatever, I've heard it before.
So Alex, it seems the board wants to put this to bed. So when, let's all agree that, I'm going to give Alex the last word on this. Once we start discussing, you know, this letter, this letter and, or phantom letter, or whatever it is, is done. We're going to put it to bed, and Alex is going to...
It should come up during our code of conduct, if we're going to...
Well, as an example, right. But we're not going to talk about the specific issue anymore.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Alex, I'll give you the last word.
Well, I think the incident that Mr. Carr is bringing up, he's brought it up time and time again. And if he wasn't looking for headline soundbites, he would understand that I did explain my whole conversation with the Ethics Commission. And I will explain it again. And this is where I have a problem with you thinking this is a lie. So get your recorder out, get the cameras honed in, get ready. So that next week, when you want to accuse me of a lie, you can say this. When you brought the subject matter up, I said that I had disclosed that I had an employee that worked part-time for me for my fire training business. Do you recall that? You probably don't, because that's not what you want to recall. Secondly, it was resulted because I wanted to donate services to this town for training firefighters, which I could not do in compliance... firefighters, which I could not do in compliance with the ethics law. At that time, I worked with Town Council and the State Ethics Commission to determine what I could and could not do. In that conversation was a conversation about my former employee that was, whether there was a problem with that whatsoever. When you brought the matter up, I reviewed all that with Town Council, not with Town Council, with the Ethics Commission, and they advised I needed to take it a step further and specifically file a disclosure related to that gentleman. The appearance of a conflict of interest comes when there is someone who says, "There's an appearance." And I addressed that appearance in all respect to your concerns. Went back through hours and hours of stuff, and the Ethics Commission has it all on file. They read it all back to me. And I addressed it. And that's what compliance is. And that's not a lie. There's no lie in there. If you want to find a letter, you'll find a letter. Did I adequately state everything about Tom Clancy? No, I didn't use his name. I referred to his employee because he wouldn't be forced to the embarrassment of having this conversation on the television. But that matter has been taken care of, and it is in compliance. And if you persist to think that that's a lie, then you have a personal problem.
All right, first off, first off.
No, 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 I said, I said I'd give the last word, Jim. Jim, Jim, please.
You know, it's about, it's about the letter. It's about a letter that he stated.
Jim, he's going to give, I know, I know. Let's give him the last word. I said I would. And we said, we all agreed to put this to bed. It's, it's in Betty Bye. Not right now. We've had public comment, and I haven't even gotten to my board member updates yet. So it's seven now, 7:47, and we're on the 7:10 item. So I'd like to proceed. I'd like, I'd like to proceed. Thank you. First of all, I have my items for, for member updates. I want to thank this board for meeting with the Committee to Increase Voter Participation. The other night, we had, well, Alex was part of the board, and then we had three of us there, right? And, and I was late, and I was sure to let them know, and Jim, you couldn't make it, and you were sure to let them know. So I also appreciate that this board had the, the courtesy to update them and let them know whether or not we were going to be there or not. Also, Winterfest for Shaker Lane families is this, this Friday. I don't even think you have to have kids to go there and participate in the cakewalk, so come on down if you like, and stop my kids from getting, walking away with four cakes. Also, I just want to explain one thing that's been happening a couple of times lately, is the board has a lot of issued items before them, and some of them that are board member, are things that we need to discuss, such as policies. So when we're discussing policies, it's, it's my feeling that those are things for the board to hammer out. We have five people plus Keith, plus sometimes Town Council and Bonnie, all going on these, all talking about these policies, and, you know, we had seven or eight people nitpicking and going through all these line by line. So I usually don't take a lot of public comment, because I think if we have seven people splitting hairs, at that, at that point, and we add in, you know, more, it's going to just make things drag on. And it's, it really is the board's policy to develop. Now, after policies develop, obviously, they're out there for the public, and there can be public, you know, anytime someone wants to talk about something, add public input, they can ask for it to be an agenda item. Sometimes we announce our, our policies, and we put them out there for comment and have public hearings before we adopt them. But a couple of times lately, it's been coming up where people are, have the expectation that they are allowed to speak at these things, and while we try to have, we've added this public input, and we try to incorporate public input as much as possible, it is not always required. Open meaning law does not require everybody to be heard. According to open meaning law, the meeting is supposed to be held in the public, but it's not, it doesn't require public participation on that. Like I said, when we do have something, we come up with a policy or something like that, a lot of times before we absolutely adopt it, we do have public, public hearings, but it's usually, it's just not, it's not fruitful to, to have them in the nitpicking stage. With that, with the time being 7:50, I will move on to the 7:15 agenda item, which is Housing Authority. From Town Boards, here we have a Housing Authority. We're going to talk about filling a vacancy through the May 2014 election. I understand that we have one opening and we have one applicant. Keith, or Bonnie, would you like to take it from here?
Yeah, I can take it, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is scheduled as a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the Housing Authority, or as many are here tonight. We have Bartlet Harvey. I don't think I see any other members, but we, so we will have a total of six people voting tonight to fill the vacancy. The one applicant that we have is Barbara McCray, who's, you're still interested? We didn't talk you out of it in the last round, so, okay.
Why am I here?
You never have to care. So, and, so, so the, so the purpose is, is for the boards to interview the applicant and make the appointment. And it may end up, I would guess it may end up being a short interview, since we all know Barbara, whose work in Littleton is long and admirable, so.
So Keith, now, so we have five here, five of us, and how many of the, how many for the, for-
You have one. You have one of the four Housing Authority members, existing members of the year.
So do we still have to get a majority of both, or do we just need a majority of those present?
No, no, it's the majority of those, those voting, so.
So we need a majority, not that I'm really worried, I just want to know for procedures, right?
If, if all had been there, then you would need five votes out of nine, so I bet you you're going to get-
We need four out of, but, okay. I just wanted to make sure we had enough to actually vote.
You do, yeah.
Barbara, I am very interested to hear what you have to say. If you forgive me, I am dying of thirst, so before, so while you're doing that, please don't feel I'm rude. I'm going to go fill my 300th mug with some water, so I can be prepared to ask you many questions when I come back.
I'm gonna talk with you.
With that, Barbara McCray, would you like to speak?
I'm actually chewing gum because I was getting a little dry myself, so. I just felt like I am interested in this particular board, because working with seniors for a few years, I see them every day, and I hear their concerns about many things, and some is housing. And I felt like if I was on the board, I would be closer to the situation, and I could hear both sides. I think that's an important thing. I'm going to feel for the seniors, of course, because I, I care about them, but I still need to know, you know, why they have these concerns, or if they need to have any concerns, and if you have concerns, in fact. But anyway, so that was my main thing, I, I'm interested in being there.
Great.
Could I also introduce Lisa Larabee, our new executive director at the Housing Authority, through in case any of our members of the public have been senior, but welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And not just here, but there.
Okay.
And I've heard good things. That's one of them.
Great. Okay. So we can go around the board. Trish, and Alex, do you have anything to say? Any questions?
I think we have a very dedicated volunteer to this town who has been volunteering for a lot of years, and usually after so many years, you start to slow down, and apparently you're not ready for that yet. Thank you.
Yep. I've known Barbara for a long time now. I've had the pleasure of being on certain subcommittees or small committees that have met at Pine Tree Park in the, in the past to try to resolve some issues. She has a great interest in seniors, and she had a lot of major concerns, what was happening at Pine Tree Park, and she's going to be a phenomenal addition to that, to that Housing Authority, so I appreciate you volunteering for something else beyond what you're doing.
I would do the same thing, anyway.
I would absolutely second what Joe just said. Thank you. I was happy to see your application. Thank you.
I'm with Joe, too. I mean, I've been to Housing Authority meetings with you, Barbara, and I see all you do for the seniors. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Following my own advice, I'm not going to repeat the praise. I'd just like to say thank you for stepping forward.
Moved that the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the Littleton Housing Authority vote pursuant to master and laws, Chapter 41, Section 11, to appoint Barbara McCray to fill a vacancy in the Housing Authority through the May 2014 annual town election.
Second. They moved in second to fill the Housing Authority vacancy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Six, six oh. Okay, very good. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, that's not, that's not roll call, right? Yeah.
Who got it?
All right. Sustainability Committee. So it seems as though the Sustainability Committee has already been hard at work, and they've come up with a mission statement and a few other items on here. And I'll turn it over to the Sustainability Committee if they want to introduce anything.
Erin, there's Erin. Okay, very good. Here's our chairman, Erin Healy.
All right.
So we put together the, our charter, and the goals in there, and what we're trying to do is work cooperatively with the community, and bring people in and listen to them before we do anything. So I, I, when I told people that I was on the Sustainability Committee, a lot of people said, "We're going to take my plastic bags away from me." And maybe we will, we will suggest that at some point, but the idea is to reach out and listen, not to go out and make waves, basically. So that's how that got put together. And Jim Quaid has, were you going to talk about the, we already have, we want to ask for some money.
I just saw deer in headlights.
No, this is on the composting?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure how we were going to progress.
Yeah, I don't know how to do it.
Progress first. Well, let's get this.
Okay.
And then when you have a formal proposal or request, you know, come on in. Is it something that's going to need a budget item, or?
I think Bonnie's worked out the way to handle it internally.
All right. So once you, right, so once they have that request, they can, they want to bring it in, I mean?
Yeah.
They have it.
But we don't have it yet, do we?
It's not on this agenda.
No. It'll be on the revolving funds proposed for town. It's coming.
It will be a, a new revolving fund in a town meeting article for compost.
Okay. So you'll need to come back at that time, when we start, when we have that article, when we have the article all completed?
Okay. It's just a long, uh, okay.
It's for sustainability.
No way back on the property tax.
It's for the whales, right?
Yeah. No way back on the property tax.
All right. Would you like to read your mission statement, so that everybody can bask in the glory of it?
I don't have it.
I will, I can highlight it. I think it's a good job. I think we left this, to this committee to go ahead and, and develop their own mission statement, and it, I think the, you know, there's a lot of other background purpose definition here, but I think the mission is worth reading. "To help develop a culture of sustainability in our community through a partnership with all residents, government, and business utilizing innovation, education, communication, and comprehensive and strategic planning." They focused on four areas that they want to work for the sustainability, natural resource, conservation, energy, waste, and other environmental impact areas. And they state they'll issue an annual report to the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, all right, great. And Jen, I think you were part of this formation, so I think I will let you go next. Do you want to have anything? I should have let you read the mission statement, I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, I'm just ready to propose the motion.
Does anyone else have anything?
Moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the recommended charge and mission statement adopted by the Sustainability Committee on December 19th, 2013.
They moved in second to accept the recommendation, recommended charge and mission statement of Sustainability Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
So they have to bring the proposal forward at the next meeting, or is that what's going to happen?
Well, we'll, we'll put it on the list of proposed articles that we, I don't want to, I don't want to have anyone show up for the next meeting. If we're, if we're just opening a warrant, we won't be inserting articles for, till about a month from now, yeah? But we, we'll have it on our list.
You all right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get more information tomorrow.
You get the details, yeah. Don't sweat the details. All right. 7:30 item. I'm catching up here. We're going to hear from the police chief or the deputy police chief for some appointments.
Hello, Michael.
It's Michael.
I'll sit back there.
Good evening.
I'd like to present, hold on a minute. Lieutenant Michael Cook, he's another student from Nantucket. Obviously, the board authorized us to hire another patrol officer. Lieutenant Michael Cook, he's from, originally grew up in Lancaster, Mass. We've got our eye on Michael since our last hiring process. He actually went to the academy with three other employees that currently work in the department, Mike Crower, Doug Landry, and Ryan Casey. We've had, we had our eye on him, and he was still available when this opening came up. Been in Nantucket since November 2010, was a part-time, since June of 2008 with Nantucket. In 2011, he also received a lifesaving award down in Nantucket for participating in a mass rescue in a house which completely overwhelmed the police department, fire department, and the hospital in Nantucket with the amount of casualties that were coming into the hospital. We fully believe that Mike will make a great addition to the local police department family and, and our town and our community, and with that, I leave you to grill Michael.
Alex.
In Nantucket to Littleton, that's quite a trip.
Yep.
I used to do it twice a week. Doesn't get the same sound.
Take a seat, Michael.
Like so.
So, why Littleton? What makes us a desirable? I don't know. Well, I think it's kind of the same dynamic where I work right now. This time of year, it's a small community, close knit, changes a little bit in the summertime, but I think the overall year-round population is very similar to what it is here in Littleton. So, you know, it's close to where I grew up, might want to come back home, and I think I'd be a good fit here.
Mike, what do you see the differences between Littleton and Nantucket? And referring more to the busy season, because obviously, Nantucket's much different. So coming here, and what do you see as a difference, as, you know, our duties would be as opposed to being real busy, but they're not busy?
Well, in the summertime, there's not a whole lot of time for community policing, you know, kind of going from call to call to call on the island. I think here, there'd be more time for that, to interact with the community, and, you know, you're not rushing from call to call to call most of the time, like we are on the island. So I think that would be a big difference, that you can interact with the community more on a more relaxed basis than you are if you respond to a call, you kind of go from here to there real quick. Here, I think you kind of slow down and interact with the community a little bit more. Thank you.
I, I see here that you have some qualifications and certifications. Are there other continuing trainings or certifications that you're hoping to get in the next short while?
Nothing that I have my eye, my eye on at the moment, yeah.
Okay.
I've been service training every year, but other than that, not really.
Thank you.
So when, when you decide to come to Littleton and, and take this position as a patrolman in Littleton, what is your expectations of the department?
Well, as the deputy chief said, I went to the academy with three guys who work Well, as the deputy chief said, I went to the academy with three guys who work here already, and they've kind of filled me in on the way it works here, and, you know, the community as a whole. Really great place to work, so that's kind of what I'm looking forward to. I've kind of embraced living on the island, dealing with the small community. Everyone kind of knows each other, and I think I thrive well in that, so that's kind of what I'm looking for here.
Okay, being on a busy highway, too. No boats.
No. All beset.
All right. What is the Sergeant Michael Chevron Scholarship, and why did you win it?
He was a sergeant in Massachusetts State Police. He was killed... He was the arson investigation squad for the State Police, and he was killed by carbon oxide poisoning. I won the scholarship as a result of the scholarship essay contest back in 2006.
And what was that... Did that allow you to... Did that help you with the academy, or was it college?
That was related to any police academy. It was from college.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, great. All right. That's right. Okay. Anything else? Deputy, anything? Chief?
My... Your...
"Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Michael Cook of Nantucket, Mass. to the position of patrolman with the Littleton Police Department, subject to successful completion of medical testing."
Second.
"They move the second to appoint Michael Cook to the... as a patrol officer of the Littleton Police Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone.
So we sent Nantucket one high school principal. How many... How many police officers don't we get on that track?
It's a pleasure.
We're going to take a boat back and forth all the time or not?
All right. All right.
To go on a crime spree.
Yeah. Is there anybody left on the road? All right. Moving on. We have an introduction here from the fire department. We have some new members to bring forward.
Mrs. Allen.
Chief, I'll leave it up to you.
We have Lowell Kish, Cody Brooks, David Parks. They just completed the 240-hour recruit academy from the Mass Fire Academy. They are now call members on the department. They graduated at the end of December, Cody and Lowell. They were part of the Explorer Program for about the last four years as well, so they have some background in the department. And Dave came to us just with some interest in giving back to the public and joining the department. So they were sworn in this past Friday, and they are now active members of the department.
You want to just introduce yourselves and give us like a 30 seconds or less spiel of your background?
My name's Lowell Kish, and I've lived in this town my whole life. I went to Littleton High School. I was an explorer for all through high school and decided to join the department and go to the academy and give back to the community.
Great, thanks.
My name's Cody Brooks. I was to the Explorers for a couple of years. I graduated high school last year. Both my father and my grandfather were firemen, so I wanted to follow their footsteps to give back to the community.
And David Parks. I grew up here in town. It's just a tight-knit community. Give back a little bit to the community. I have two kids that go to school here. Looking to get a little bit more in.
I want to congratulate you. It's a great organization. Of course, I would think that. The amount of commitment that you have to show in this day and age for the training that you have to go through just to get a chance to put on the Littleton Fire Department badge is amazing, and I think that speaks a lot to your character, and I'm very glad you are aboard.
I'm impressed with the number of hours that people have to go through to get to this. And I really am. 240 hours to go through that, week after week after week. I'd give you all the credit in the world. I certainly want to thank you for being part of our fire department.
And I just wanted to add that it was lovely on Friday that we... I know that Joe and Jim and I were present for the swearing-in of all of you. It was a sort of a solemn occasion to hear the responsibility and the dedication and the oath that you took, and it really impressed upon me, the sort of the integrated community piece and the commitment service above self is what we heard throughout that. It was very nice and welcome and good luck.
Again, as Jenna said at the swearing-in, it was great to see your folks and your kids and everybody there for you, being sworn in. And the commitment that, as Joe said, and Alex, to go to the academy and, you know, 240 hours of... I'm sure it wasn't fun at times, along with all the classwork and the physical fitness piece of it. So congratulations for your graduation and congratulations on joining the department. And thank you.
That's about it. Unless you have something else, just say good luck and thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much. Good luck.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, chief.
Good luck.
All right. So now we're on to 7:45 here. We have the Common Foods Littleton Sub Shop Pub on the Common Liquor License. And this is a vote... This is regarding a vote that we took in December because there was a violation from something not related to the liquor license. It was for accessibility, handicap accessibility, ADA accessibility. And we voted to have just a stay in the permit and to hold it until we heard back from the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. They had an inspection, a site visit on last Monday, and they were supposed to have a decision today, but what happened with that, Keith? Do you want to give us an update?
Well, the site inspection was conducted on January 15th. The matter then gets scheduled on the next available meeting date, which while the AAB is meeting today, this matter is not on the agenda that got posted last Thursday. They meet... They have two upcoming meetings. I don't know if we know what the scheduled date, whether you're on the 10th or the...
I think it's the 10th.
The 10th. So what we're... So since the board had voted to grant a temporary license through today, pending the outcome of the activity at the AAB, and since the AAB still needs some more time to work on it, what's suggested... What's recommended for tonight is extend it for, let's say, another month in case it doesn't get on the 10th. They also meet on the 24th, so that by the time you're taking it up again, there will have been action by the Architectural Access Board on the variance requests that have been submitted. We have a copy of the formal submission that's been made, and we will be in a position to hear back certainly if we extend this license on a temporary basis through our second meeting in February, the 24th. But we're not really in a position to do anything else tonight because we were specifically looking for the licensee to file the necessary variance request with the AAB. He's done that. We have the recommendation from the building commissioner that there's no imminent safety issue at stake if you... It's just it's a code compliance issue that needs to be addressed, but that Roland had no objection to essentially extending this license for one more month pending the final AAB action.
So we gave a temporary license for a reason, asked him to follow up. He did his part, and it's just basically the state that hasn't followed... Hasn't completed their portion of the deal.
They were not able to have the state action also within the same limited timeframe that we came up with. But they did what we asked them to do.
All right. Anybody? Discussion? Okay.
All right. Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
"Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to further extend from January 27th to February 24, 2014, the temporary all-alcoholic common vehicular... particular license for Common Foods, Inc., Gregory P. Ether's manager doing business as Littleton Sub Shop, aka Pub on the Common, 486 King Street, pending action by the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board."
Motion remains seconded to extend the license from January 27th to February 24, 2014, the temporary all-alcoholic common vehicular... particular license for Common Foods, Inc., Gregory P. Ether's manager doing business as Littleton Sub Shop, aka Pub on the Common, 486 King Street, pending action by the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. Motion remains seconded to extend the license from January 27th to February 24th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
I'm sending this around for signature. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We now have a...
Which role?
We will be having a joint meeting with the municipal school facility... With Permanent Municipal Building Committee about the Joint Municipal School Facility Assessment Study update. Are you in session? Do you want to call the session? I don't know. I always never know what to do with those details. Are you in session? It's a joint meeting.
We have a joint meeting?
Yeah, it's a joint scheduled joint meeting.
We can. I thought we were just going to give you an update.
All right, either way, doesn't matter.
Thank you. This thing...
Well, just give Jenna five seconds.
What's that?
Give Jenna five seconds.
Okay.
Who's not here from your board?
Richard.
Thank you.
Rich Crowley.
Alex Pratt. Okay. Oh, I didn't see our way. Where'd he go?
You can't miss it right before you go up the stairs.
Okay, great. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Save paper.
Did you see the line? That's the summary. Point a bit to it.
Okay, that's easy to understand.
No, it's not.
Easy to understand. Just felt you...
Middle school, 2029, that's going to cost us any money.
All right. Go ahead, sure. What do you have?
This is a two-fold meeting here, or update. We'll give you an update, brief update on what the committee's been up to the last few months. I don't want to get too involved with that unless you have a lot of questions or you want to get involved in it. I'd rather devote the half an hour or so we have to the facility's study and a discussion on that, so... But if you have questions on anything, feel free to ask. So I'm going to give you the update, and Steve Moore is going to do the facility's study. He's been really involved with that. So in the first part, the projects that the Permanent Municipal Building Committee has been working on in the last several months. Effectively, we closed out the track. There's some warranty items on it that will still be done in the spring, but effectively it's done. And we have about $11,000 that we didn't use that was budgeted for that project. We did end up having enough money to put the abobites up on the term that we had built along the side of... Between the highway and the track. The abobites went up in late fall, and they will need to be readjusted as the spring comes along, but they look great and hopefully act as the sound barrier. And there was a few other things that we put in there at the end because we had the money to, and we felt they should have been done. So that project is wrapped up and feel that it's a great product for the town, a great venue. The COA Kitchen, Council on Agent Kitchen, that's been going on for a couple of years, and we finally got that down to where I believe it's going to be on the town warrant for town meeting this spring. The cost of that, we're looking, I think it's going on the warrant, is $140,000, of which $15,000 of that is for the... Everything to get it out to bid. That's all inclusive on that, so it's not just for the kitchen itself. It's the whole package. Facility study, Steve will give you an update on that. The building at the West Lawn Cemetery was in tough shape, and we had that building repaired this late fall, and that job is complete. The exterior of it needed quite a bit of work, and the company that did it, Certapro, did a fine job on it. We're real happy with it. That was something that was in the capital maintenance plan that was put together three or four years ago whenever we did that, and we finally got around to getting it done. One issue we have is the roof on it. We found that the roof needs to be replaced. We wanted to do it before this winter came, but winter came too fast on us, so we had to make repairs temporarily. The roof will be done in the spring when the weather clears up. Park and Rec 300 King Street project, we're going to redo the basketball courts there. There's plans for an exercise area. Right now, the funding is in place to have... We have Green International doing... They did a survey, wetlands delineation, doing a whole layout for the project, and we're in the first phase of all of that. That project will be moving along further when the spring comes along. There was a meeting with Green International last Thursday. I couldn't attend. Brian Richter from the Park and Rec attended the meeting and went over with them where they stand on that. But that project is moving along quite well.
Chief, if I could just interrupt one thing or ask a question. We had meetings with the Castle on the Trees, Castle in the Trees folks in regards to the possibility of incorporating that with the big project that you guys are working on. Has that been talked about at all, the PMBC?
Not in the PMBC, no. Brian filled us in a little bit on that recently, but there hasn't been a great deal to talk about it, so I have nothing to offer on that because from our perspective, that's something new. Park and Rec would know more about that, and Brian didn't have a lot to offer.
You got something for the application? No? Thank you, sorry.
Let's see, what do we have? The fire station. The fire station, I don't think I need to add much on that, other than what our part of it was. We did the preliminary drawings. We got those done. Cost estimate, kind of like a feasibility study. The... At one point, the Morgan property, as you know, was looked at to put the station there, but that has been eliminated. We're just waiting for you people to give us the word. As we all know, we work at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. We don't create the projects. We don't make the projects. You come to us. We don't go to you. When you ask us to move forth, we shall. In the meantime, we wait with bated breath.
Very poetic.
I'm dripping with the sarcasm.
At that, ladies and gentlemen, Steve Moore will do the facility's study. For... We and the committee talked about this for quite some time. We think this is a terrific thing, and we hope that you people agree with us. We did have... We had someone, the company EMG that we gave the contract to from the RFP, to do our facility's study. We had someone come out a couple of months ago to make a presentation, and we did it at a school committee meeting because that was... We tried to get the finance committee, Board of Selectmen, School Committee all together at once because you were the people, the ones that have the biggest interest in it, and it was almost impossible to do. And unfortunately, that particular evening, none of you were available, but we did have the gentleman there. So what we'll do tonight in short order, Steve will do his best to fill you in on it, and we'll go from there. So with that, Steve Moore.
Let me just interrupt. Does anyone have questions on the update, on the other projects right there, so while it's fresh in our mind, we can just go... It's the Castle on the Trees. I mean, if you're doing this beautiful project, it'd be nice to have the scope include that. That's all. And I know that Brian and the Rec Commission were working on a...
I think CPC.
CPC funding for that, so...
Okay, well, find out what Brian has to offer on that.
Did we accept that? We haven't accepted that, or did we?
No.
We haven't accepted that.
You can't until the Rec Commission's...
No. No action was taken. That if it's a matter of accepting playground equipment, you need... Needs to be our playground commission that votes to accept that.
Okay.
And we encouraged them to file an application with the Community Preservation Committee to address the ADA compliance issues, and I believe that they are working on that.
Okay. So they accepted it? Do we know that... We don't know that yet? They haven't yet? No? Okay.
All right, so there's nothing on the updates? All right, now we'll move on. Thank you very much. Steve?
Well, the company that we ultimately went with, five companies responded to the RFP, and EMG was obviously the most qualified. They had the lowest price, and they did a terrific job. They did a facility's study of all four schools, the police department, Poten Building, and the town office and library. They came back to us with the reports. I think you have some of them in front of you. They had an executive summary. They had a list of all the items that they felt required attention, either from a equipment standpoint or a system standpoint, over the next 20 years. They put together upfront the what they felt was a good replacement cost and the year in which that replacement would have to be considered. And it's really a tool for, you know, planning out a capital program. They had prioritized one through five the work that had to be done, and some of those were ADA issues, some of them were code compliance issues, and some of them were need-to-address-right-now issues. So... But the people who manage the buildings and the selectmen should get together and see if they agree with that priority, and you can always change that. This is a database that is maintained by EMG, and we have access to it. I think Bonnie has access to it.
I can add.
Yeah. And everyone on the building committee and Steve Mark at the schools. So we would propose that... Well, one of the things that... To make this a valuable tool, you have to input data into this database when you complete a project, so that comes off the database, and you put in how much you actually spent versus how much was budgeted. So it's a really nice interactive tool, but we only...[1739.33] And everyone on the building committee and Steve Mark at the schools. So we would propose that, well, one of the things that, to make this a valuable tool, you have to input data into this database when you complete a project, so that comes off the database and you put in how much you actually spent versus how much was budgeted. So it's a, it's a really nice interactive tool, but we only, we would recommend to the selectmen that the building committee maintain control over that input, have administrative rights, if you will, and that the other people that have access can go in and get whatever, excuse me, reports that they need. What else am I missing?
That you and Richard were going to be the input people?
Oh, well, Richard Crowley and I would be the gatekeepers of that database. Trying to think what else there is. It's, it's an interesting tool and if you have a chance to look at the reports, I think it speaks for itself.
We've got all the reports are uploaded to the town's website. They are linked from the Permanent Municipal Building Committee's webpage and they're also linked to the summary of tonight's meeting. The, one of the reports is up on the screen here. They're, each one is somewhere between 60 or 90 pages, so we didn't include them. I sent links electronically to the reports, but we did not copy out more than the tables that contained rather, as you can see, rather detailed calculation of what.
Actually, one thing that I forgot to mention was each element that's identified in the report has a photograph attached to the appendix, so if you want to see what they're talking about, you can go to the photograph. It's very well documented.
And can you give us a quick executive summary for people watching at home or just, you know, things for good conditionings and bad condition? Do you have anything that you can sum up in a minute or two or is it hard to pull out pieces and?
Yeah, you know, I, it's been a while since I looked at the reports specifically.
Yeah.
Might have been back in July.
But now, okay, so the bottom line is that they have a summary of cost per year?
And they're, and they're, they're not escalated. They're in 2013 costs. So part of this database, if you want to go in and use it for modeling purposes, you can go in and put in a 3% escalation, 4%, that kind of thing.
Can we actually, it looks like that's what we have, not on this master sheet, but on the packet that we have here, we have totals escalated 3% compounded annually. So some of the pricing here is pulled out?
Yeah, but you can, you can go into the database and manipulate that for like purposes. If you think 3% is not enough, you can make it 4%.
By you, you mean you?
Well, either me or Rich Crowley.
Under the direction of what's like.
Exactly.
In the summary sheet, it is about the 3% escalation.
All right.
Okay.
And you make this one?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay.
All right.
In the back is 3%?
Yes.
Per year?
Per compound.
Oh, and one other thing, to host this database on an annual basis is $5,000 a year. And for that, they update all the labor and equipment rates to that year's cost tables and then that will change all the numbers going forward.
And you would recommend that we budget for that $5,000 club membership?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a great tool. We would recommend it, having looked at it, you know, I would urge you to take a look at it and.
So that $5,000 a year is not in here? It's not in this?
No, no.
And that could, that may not escalate at 3%, but that will maybe every year or five years it'll be.
They, they will put the real cost for that year into the tables and if, say HVAC equipment goes up 20%, that'll change all the HVAC equipment. Last year, I think drywall went up 25%.
Were you trying to get to the fact that it's $5,000 for 2014 and 15 and 16, but maybe in 2017 it'll be $6,000? And are we committing to a set price and it's a flat rate annually?
No.
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 This was.
That would be for the next year.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, likely it'll go on every few years, but so it, so it seems to be like for somebody here to sit and track all these numbers would be time prohibitive, where they can do it and they probably update it once in their database and all their clients suck the number out. So it's much more cost effective for them to do it, yeah.
All we have to do is go in and input the projects that we've done and how much they cost.
And then what's coming up or?
Or if we want to, if we want to add projects.
So, yeah, when do we, you know, so say there's some project here that, you know, it's not on now, when do we find out of, how do we get that into the program? Let's, you know, once you replace something, do they automatically say, okay, well, the next time is 20 years from now and here's when it starts happening?
Well, what we could do is we, when the.
I think that's Steven Rich that didn't have to do that, right?
Well, we would do that. But, you know, if they replace a system or a piece of equipment that has a 20-year life expectancy, we would just say, in 20 years, with proper maintenance, it would be replaced in 20 years.
So also this, always been talked about, maintenance person for the building, so that could be somebody who goes and inputs those items and starts talking about new projects and.
Well, you know, this is a capital, this is a replacement program or a maintenance program.
Okay. All right, I'll stop. Alex, go ahead. You have anything?
Well, yeah, did, did you happen to look at, maybe this is the question for Bonnie, but if I'm looking at this chart correctly, this is what we should invest capitally for each year going out through a long time.
It's 20 years on there if you look at it. Yeah, it's outdated.
So if we take a 10-year chunk out of that, do we have some sort of idea what in the next, because we, we and the finance committee should be thinking about things here and 10 years down the road. We have an idea what that average capital burden would be per year?
It's about $5 million a year in total with all the other items in our capital.
$5 million a year?
A year.
If we were to go by this plan?
This plan with the other items such as equipment and other things that.
This included in the entire capital plan?
Correct.
$5 million a year. How much does this add to the capital plan?
Well, over the 20-year period, it's $22 million and.
But in the, in the 10-year cycle?
I, I don't think I have that figure here.
Just last year or this year?
Yeah.
For this year, which we haven't done, $600,000 and for the 2015 budget, which we're beginning to talk about, is another $900,000. So this year that we haven't done plus the 900 for their recommendation for 15 is $1.5 million. There goes your $1.8 million if in fact, you know, the, the priority of these projects punged to the top of us.
Because the finance committee talked about this at all?
We have, no.
Is there, is there any, oh, sorry, go Joe.
No.
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't.
So this is, this is absent a maintenance, capital projects, can you manage these as capital projects or are we still looking at a professional that has to come in and manage this?
We can handle this. That's why we, in our meetings, when we discussed it and felt that it was best that we managed it, that we needed to have two people that worked together to do the input, the information and we just felt that it would make more sense for us to be the ones to take care of it. If we work with EMG to have them host the system and they update everything and keep track of it in their end, it gives access to Bonnie, to all of you, to the school department, Steve Mark, and I think that it just works better that, that's just what we came up with. You guys can come up with whatever.
This looks like several, seven capital projects, well, 2013, it's seven capital projects which have to, the project itself has to be managed.
Right, and so what would end up happening is we end up usually managing the many though. So they all eventually come through us. So that's why we felt it made sense for us to keep an eye on them all the time.
Does the cost include things like feasibility studies and other, the compliance things we have to do? Architect, that kind of thing, which in the public bidding field, we know it's a little out there. So, so we're going to have something, in a, each one of these we take on, we're going to have something additional that's added on that's not included in this number?
Well.
It depends.
Yeah, it depends on what it is.
I'm talking architects, engineers, that, that sort of thing.
Well, if you need a professional engineer or architect, it's not included.
Okay. All right. All right. All right, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, happened to get up when Alex is at a loss for words?
I see this, this includes fields and holes and everything.
Ex halo lighting, sidewalks.
The question, I just quickly looked at this, I see the alumni field for 2013, they cost $262,000 for that, $16,000 for a school board at the.
Well, that's why, that's why you and the school department have to prioritize these things, you know. The EMG just came out and took a shot at it.
Okay, so if I were to go to the report, I only look through it quickly and I wanted to look at alumni field and what the cost of 263 was, they would have the whole description of what has to be done or what they thought would have to be done?
That's correct.
Yeah, with pictures.
Pictures are good for me.
Print this small's not good for me.
Okay.
In respect to what you were talking about, Joe, most of what you see there was based on information gathered from us by EMG. So if you see an item there like a scoreboard, I don't think EMG said, well, they really ought to have a scoreboard. I think that somewhere along the line in their interviews with the people occupying various buildings, that probably came up in conversation.
That would be correct. I used to do feasibility studies more than I would like to think, but it was all based on interviews.
Go ahead.
I just had a question relative to the, the front page, the selectmen were given saying that the study identifies $451,376 in facility upgrades, which are included in the proposed FY 2015 capital improvements plan, but that number doesn't match the total surveyed 600, yeah, that 451.
Let me go through that.
Okay.
The capital plan for fiscal 2015 ties into this $453,000 figure and I was off because I took one figure that hadn't been escalated, so.
Okay.
So a tiny bit.
Yep.
The other two years, it was fiscal 13 and 14. We have to push those in somehow, somewhere.
Okay, all right.
So there, there needs to be some more work with the school committee because one of the items was the bleachers at the, at the field. So that, you know, that's a big item that needs to be moved somewhere. It does exist in the school department's capital plan now, so I kind of left it where it was, but obviously they prioritized it as a higher item to be done. So there's some work to be done to allocate this $1.6 million in unfunded.
I found the bleachers.
Good work.
Okay.
All right, thank you for clarifying that.
So, you also chair?
Yeah, I am, thank you.
So the 2013 calendar years or fiscal years?
I go by fiscal year. So this study started last year.
All right.
So, you know, I'm sure they looked at everything as it was last year, so they looked at 13 and then items that should be done this year, which is fiscal 14, and then items for next year. Well, we've already done 13 and 14 in my books.
Right, but based on your, based on the study, was it, is it a calendar year? I mean, you know, for longevity and life?
They base it on the calendar year.
Calendar year.
They responded to the RFP, which was due February 15th. We looked at the proposals, I think in late March, by April, they were on board.
It just, it's.
Yeah, six months one way, the other.
Yeah, right, right. It's interesting. So, so the 470 includes the alumni field for Russell Street? That's, that's where that got tucked in? Okay, good, sort of figured.
So we're not obligated to do anything?
Oh, no, I understand, yeah.
This is, this is something to go by and when we look at what we started several years ago with the board of chairs and our 10-year capital plan, then it all falls in place. The difference here is that Bonnie traditionally every year asks the department heads and anybody else that will listen to help her put together the, you know, what, what do you need? What does your department need? You know, all of that. And this is putting all the ducks in a row here. This is starting to relieve some of that strain on her and the department heads because it becomes, we're trying to eliminate the Band-Aid stuff or the emergency stuff that always comes along. We're trying to look ahead.
Yeah.
And what we've been doing the last few years is putting out fires and we're trying to get it, you know, it could take some time, but we're trying to get it so that it's not putting out fires, that, you know, maintenance has to come into play at some point, but we're trying to, to take care of all of this stuff in advance. And then one key question that comes in that people always seem to ask is, well, how are we going to pay for this? And I just, it was the roads plan as an example. It took a long time, but the Board of Selectmen bit the bullet and put a good plan together, a workable plan for the highway department and working with Jimmy Clyde and you've come up with a good workable road maintenance plan. And that's what you need to do with this. You need to bite that same bullet, bite it a little harder and, and, you know, we've got, and unfortunately, I didn't write it down and don't remember what the total value of the town's infrastructure is, but it's in the millions. And this is, these are buildings and whatever that you own, I own, everybody in this room owns and we're obligated to take care of it. It doesn't come cheap, but we still have to take care of it because if we don't, it just deteriorates more and it costs more in the long run to take, to fix it or replace it. We're doing, we're not asking for anything more than you're doing your own home.
Oh, come on, don't let me forget, I'll come on when everyone, boy's done. I'm good. You're good? Okay, I, I'm not, I'm not done. This looks like a very comprehensive report. You said that it was based a lot on interviews? Was it all interviews or did they have people on the ground? I just noticed that they're from Maryland.
As you can see from photographs, they went in and looked at all the equipment.
Yeah.
All the systems, they took photographs and made assessments based on, you know, what they know.
Okay, all right, that's good. And this is something that's been coming up and, you know, up a few times at town meeting and we've talked about, well, how much do we need to do a complete report? Well, we only have this much, I think, wasn't it that we voted in, but it wasn't enough? A couple of years ago, we voted in to do this, it wasn't enough?
Yeah.
So do we feel that we, we, basically, do we spend enough and get a complete report? Is, or is there, if they had more money, would they have done other, other stuff?
By our choice, we, the first time we did it, there was, I think, $35,000 allocated to do something similar to this. But that first shot at it included everything the town owned, right down to the bathrooms at the beach house. And the one responded, we had to the RFP, was looking for $130,000, I think it was, to do it. So we revamped this down to the buildings that you see, the seven buildings, so that we could come into a reasonable, what we felt was a reasonable amount of money to get what we wanted. And it's worked out, we feel it's worked out in that we've got the key buildings all accounted for in this and the way it's set up, we can add property to it.
Yeah.
As we want and we can bring EMG in to do it or I don't know, maybe we could figure it out to do it ourselves, but at a lot less money than $130,000. So do we have everything in town in there? No. Do we have the key structures? Yes.
And you have a complete report on the key structure on the scoreboard you gave and we have a very complete report?
Very, very complete, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And I think they're, they came in less than $50,000.
Okay, all right. So has it been anything, I mean, this is gonna, this is a tough pill to swallow. It's, goes down much easier if we have a return on investment. Is there anything that states like, okay, we're spending 1.5, but if you wait, it could cost so much more down the road? It's some, it's not something always to justify, but it always, a counterpoint?
That's not a simple question to answer because it all depends on numbers.
Very easy to ask, though.
I think we can use as an example, the, let's use the, the fire station.
Yeah.
We put new windows and doors in the fire station last year and the fire chief, I'm guessing, isn't still here.
He is.
He is. Let's throw the fire chief under the bus. We had asked him to, if he could remember to keep track of what the oil cost was prior to the windows and doors being changed out. Is he smiling at me back there?
He is smiling.
And, you know, keep track of the oil consumption because it was a rather large oil bill that we're getting all the time and I'm sure that he doesn't have all it in forward his fingertips, but by year's end, we're hoping that the chief, one, is still a friend of mine and two, will have that information.
So we can't really put a number on it, but it's basically common sense. You do, I mean, is a pound of, what, pound of prevention or no, ounce of prevention is a pound of whatever?
Yeah. You put a new boiler and you're going to also do better in that respect, yeah.
So the only other question is, how much have we validated this? I know. I know they're experts and they do this all the time. Have we gone in and said, you know, well, I didn't expect that furnace there to need maintenance and have anybody look at it and say, you know, do you really know this? Is there any backup, any type of peer review or, you know, you guys on your expertise are confident in them? Or what do we have for?
Well, on the, on the stuff they have in the report that needs, that should be.
Yeah, all their replacements, not all of them, but any, you know, any replacement schedules or anything? Was there any type of second set of eyes on this?
Well.
Other than you guys?
Rather than us, well, just, we weren't necessarily involved in all of it. The people that came out were here for approximately two weeks. And toured the facilities with Steve Marks or the janitors or the people at the individual schools. They came through town hall with Bill. They went through the Holton Building with Dave Whitcomb, I think, didn't they, and you? So that it was people from EMG along with the people that are in the buildings, and that's what we wanted because we're not familiar with these buildings. And we purposely didn't feel we needed to get, I'd say, the principals of the schools directly involved with it.
Right.
Because they're not the people that are in the boiler room, you know, or any other parts of the building all the time. We want the custodians, the people that work these places all the time. We wanted Bill Maher involved with it. So we weren't directly involved with the people that worked in the buildings.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, I was, Jen Stack, you've just been waiting for a while. Go ahead.
Hi, Jen Stack, Berkeley Road. I just wanted to ask a question. You mentioned that they've done these numbers over a projected twenty years. Did they include projected increases in population that will occur over that time that will affect, obviously, potentially, things like our schools?
No.
They did not include any projections about it? So it's just like, if nobody else moves to town in the next twenty years, this is what we've got?
That has nothing to do with.
Okay.
The existing structures or the.
Well, it could potentially, but yeah. Okay, thank you. So it's just based on what's here in town, not on anything we might need to develop or build in the interim?
Correct.
Thank you.
Bill, did you have something?
I just wanted to say that sure, having another company come in and do the same thing, he very had to verify what you were asking for, as far as do we have somebody else look at it to verify their information? That being said, none of, any of this is designed to make something look pretty. It's all stuff that is gonna have to be done whether we do it under our control or let it control us. And the other thing is, as far as priorities are concerned, that's entirely up to us, all of us.
Yeah, no, I thought about that. Once we, as Steve was talking, it's, it's all, all these things are gonna come back on a capital list at some point, and there will be some way to sort through the list and say, well, no, this, you know, this can wait another year, or this has to wait another year, or we have to do this now, things like that. I was just, you know, it's a, you know, it's a recommendation, I just wanted, I just wonder what type of backup or, you know, secondary they have. We're, you know, we're trusting them on this, you know, twenty-two million dollar plan. So.
It might be a good practice if we look a year ahead, say, this is a recommendation to replace the boiler. Somebody goes in a year ahead and says, well, do we need to replace it next year? Or can it last another two years? And then we prioritize it that way.
And you're able to control those metrics within the entries?
Yeah.
That you would.
Yeah, if somebody gives us the data, we can input it.
So we'll be managing the table, they manage all the background data?
Yes, yeah.
The projects, where they go and when they move out?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, this is also an important component, then, is we have a fire station discussion of how we're gonna fund things and the maintenance money and what's available, so.
Sure.
Something else to keep in mind.
Yeah, 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 whether it's cap or maintenance or what, yeah. No, it's not easy. It's not, it's not done. No magic, where's the magic bullet now? You gotta, you give us a problem, we want a, we want a solution too.
It's not that hopeless.
I don't like when people come to me with just problems.
The magic bullet is the one I want to do to bite real hard into.
Yeah. Sure, go ahead, Alex.
You know, this, this is great work, by the way. This is something, you know, this really, yes, it's talking about things we knew were coming, but it puts it in a very nice way, and the number's a little staggering. Especially when you look at, we're already two columns behind at this point in this process. But it reminds me of a discussion we had years ago about the roads and how we weren't going to be able to catch up with them. And I think you brought up an important point. We, we found a way to fund them so much roads and it won't, maybe the roads will still stay ahead of us and we'll never catch up. But I think, you know, we as a board have to look at this in a similar way, that we take money within the levy limit and earmark it to this because the ramifications are that down the road, it's gonna cost us a lot more and it's gonna be more difficult to deal with.
You can pay now or you can pay later. It's just that if we do it within a certain amount of time, it's like anything else. Again, it's like on your home, it's gonna be a little less expensive now than it could be down the road. So, yeah, I'm sorry, we're the bearer of what you feel is bad news, but in the big picture here, this has been coming for a long time and we're just.
You know, bad, is it bad news because it's a lot of money? Yeah, would we like to have been less? Yeah, of course, but, you know, I think it's getting us, and taking another step on something we've been trying to do for years, and now the next one is, you know, what's the next step and how do we?
It's a map.
What do we pay for?
It's a map.
No, I don't think it's bad news from my perspective. I think it's, it's good news in that it's allowing us to be proactive instead of reactive.
So one of the first things we need to do is figure out if we're gonna stick with this five thousand, that should be the first item and then we start.
Well, we have to see if we're gonna use it.
Do you get a year free or?
If we're not gonna use it, there's no point in keeping it, but.
Well, we need the recommendation. Do, is that, is it necessary to use it or can we do this with a spreadsheet? I mean, I don't think we can, basically, we can't keep the costs current.
We cannot do that ourselves.
Yeah.
A lot of things involved with that, right down to the fact that we're a prevailing wage state. They take all of that into consideration. They take everything into consideration to get the job done. Quite a bit of work.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
But if there's satisfaction with the methodology that they use thus far and that you've used on the buildings that have been included in phase one of the study, then, and then the easiest determination would be that, yes, we need to spend five thousand dollars annually to be able to continue to be part of it.
Well, that's only if we use the system.
Yeah.
Can we get a recommendation from you guys? Where we go next? Whether or not it's worthwhile to go to that system and start using it?
Well, yeah, we feel.
Not tonight, but you'll.
I was about to finish that sentence.
We feel that the whole, the whole process is well worthwhile. It came out a lot, it just came out great. We're really excited about it. We feel that it's worth five thousand dollars. Yeah, it's worth it.
It gets at, I mean, we go back to the Town Government Study Committee recommendation, which was in essence, calling for a position that would have been at least a hundred thousand dollars a year. And if you can, we decided to do what we could with a consultant.
Yeah.
And if continuing that means you do five thousand a year to sort of be able to have access to them, that's part of it. And then the rest of it is, what numbers do we plug in that we don't currently have in the, in the capital budget over time? Is it half a million? Is it a million? Because sort of on the parallel with the road program, the road, the road needs vastly exceed the money that we are able to contribute to the road. We're able to come up with a ten-year plan which does millions, which is millions more than we used to do, but it's, it's, is still vastly below what the total need is. So what, what our challenge will be is to look through what the, what the potential uses are of the funds, pick the number that we can afford to do, and then prioritize within that number, and then do that each, each year, have a, you know, multi-year plan. And that does certainly involve, you know, the school department, the other facilities in coming up with that priority list. But this is exactly what we asked to have done.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of a long day of coming to it, just like you said, Town Government Study Committee, I think on the twelve recommendations, that's one of the things that was recommended two thousand and six, two thousand and seven.
The company did an excellent job. They really did.
So should we direct finance team to fit this in the budget with the other items and see where, see where it shakes out?
I have a capital plan right now.
You have, oh, a cap plan? It's operating expense. We'll talk about that later.
Whether, whether you decide to put it in the operating budget or the capital budget, it is a new expense and we will see it every year from now on.
It's a matter of get the priorities of the folks that, those seven buildings and, you know, prioritize that they said, you know?
Yeah, and then we're still, we're still, I hate to say fighting fires, but that's basically what we're doing. On the other, responding to crises at every other property. You know, we've got nicely, we have seven buildings analyzed here, but we're still, you know, fortunately there.
I'd just like to point out too that Steve, Bill Cole, Rich Crowley, and Steve Mark were probably the ones that did the greatest amount of work on it. It was a lot of work. And, you know, working with the school department went smooth, everybody worked together on it because everybody realized that this is a great benefit to the town.
You know what else would be helpful is a recommendation, a priority list of what EMG, ERG, what they should look at next. I'd like to see that as well. Since this went so well, you would probably recommend them to form more work, so what else needs to be subject to their analysis?
Yeah, we kicked that around at the last meeting.
So, yeah, and just, if you want, just get the recommendation writing, but I think, you know, if it's in there now, it'd be nice to have a paper trail just saying, we recommend that you do this, and we'll follow up with that, we'll support that, I think.
So what we'd need to do is hear from you people, whether we want to continue with EMG. I think we had this year as, two thousand thirteen was all part of the RFP. So what we paid to them, we get this year.
Yeah.
So we'd have to pay the five thousand next year.
Yeah, well, I think we told, we still, Bonnie has it in there, and I think we all support that. And then we just need, so we need that recommendation writing from you, and then we just need a recommendation of, you know, what's next. And I think we should prioritize all town properties, you know, here's, whatever they have, the next fifteen priorities, we want these looked at by EMG in this order.
We did purposely leave out the fire station because we'd just done some work there recently, and then also the fact that adding on to that building is in the near future.
We didn't forget about the fire.
And if we get costs from, costs from EMG for doing those next phases would be great too.
Okay.
You want, want me to write it down? Got it?
When do the services end for us? Are they done now? Or you've still got more?
What's that?
Their service is completed.
They're done. At this point, we have to come up with the five thousand to continue.
No, when they came and gave their presentation to the school board, that was actually outside their scope of work, and we had to pay them for that. So, but the, but the database hosting goes through the end of this year, I believe.
Yeah. Twenty-fourteen. So twenty-four, not the end of the fiscal year, but calendar year twenty-fourteen.
You know what? Let me confirm that.
Okay, yeah.
So that'd mean we only need twenty-five.
Because then we're talking, then we're talking fiscal year fifteen, you know, moving forward.
All right, anything else?
Well, if you liked it, I can give you a school committee perspective.
Uh, yeah, sure.
Do you think you need it?
Always. Neither one.
As you said, as Jeff said, on the twenty-first November, Ed Begley from EMG did come and brief the school committee and some of the members of the finance committee also that evening. So a great utility, and it's an excellent point of departure, is what the plan is, and you saw it's comprehensive. As far as the efficacy of the specific information, and certainly the information that we provided from the schools to the EMG is good information. You know, we could debate day in and night, day out, as to whether it should be a thousand dollars or a thousand and ten dollars, but that's be really at the noise level. So to Steve's point, as far as how accurate it is, we feel we are pretty darn good. Well, we left it after the meeting from a school committee perspective is to wait for you all to get the briefing, as you just did this evening now, and then for us to get together with you and the FinCom now and start going down some of those priorities. Because as you mentioned in using the roads improvement plan as a backdrop, is we're not gonna be able to get them all done. And to Ed's point is that now, Bill, excuse me, Bill's point, that, yeah, you can wait for failure, and that's not necessarily a bad thing in some instances, because if you have redundant systems and wait for failure and then replace is okay. But what this plan does, it helps us all understand that and make a better decision whether it is something that we should wait to fail or what's that mean, it's in between so that we extend that period before failure does occur on a particular subsystem in any of the buildings. So we found great utility in it, and we do want to pursue it, and it's gonna come down on the prioritization scheme as to whether it's one through fifteen, one through fifty, and then go out and do the funding for it. So it looks very good.
Thanks. All right, moving on? All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys, that was great.
Nice job.
All right, so we're going to Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Finance Budget. Before we jump into that, I would like to request two things from FinCom and Finance. I'd like to have an analysis of the options for funding the fire station, whether or not you make recommendations, that's your own peril, but if you could take a look at the points that were brought up tonight in that letter, if you need a copy of the letter, I'll give you one. But if we can just have some sort of analysis on that, and I'm mid-sentence, but, yeah, go ahead. I lost it now, I lost my train of thought. Go ahead.
Can we add this into that last point? We now have numbers for this?
What, this, the five thousand or the whole thing?
In the factoring in.
I don't, explain it, I don't know, the whole five thousand or the, the five thousand or the whole plan?
Well, if we're looking at the planning options, now we have another planning tool that this ought to be in those planning options.
I'm not understanding what your this is. Well, you're pointing and saying this. Do you mean this as in the cap plan for each year or the five thousand dollars?
The presentation we just heard. And the plan that they presented and the fiscal implications of that.
All right, I'm not following, so you guys have it? You guys understand the request? Okay, all right. And then.
That's for our next meeting, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, not for now, obviously not now, but, yeah, for our next meeting for Tuesday night. And then I have another analysis here, but maybe I'll think of it, but anyway, we just want a feedback from you on what was presented tonight, what you think of that, and any type of, anything else with the cap plan as regard to the fire station, as the direction that we gave you so far, we obviously want to send back recommendations on that.
Mr. Chair, too, I think going back to what Alex said, including this, and, I think, some of this we have to take a look at and say, what possibly could we do, not just take that one figure out, because there's things that we're not gonna even touch.
So are we gonna drop those into the cap plan, all those recommendations?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
And the finance committee hasn't met and looked at a detailed capital list, hasn't yet, and we won't meet before next Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
So we can have the discussion, and I think this discussion tonight is a good basis to help Bonnie put together the summary, and we can go through that. And it may mean that the best thing to do is maybe put a subcommittee together, Selectmen, FinCom, and Schools, and try to come forward with a recommendation as to the prioritization for whatever X number of dollars Bonnie and Keith feel we can afford. That may be a way to get us from where we are now with a hell of a lot of data piling up in front of us to a plan to try to address it. You know, it's just, I'm sort of thinking a little bit here, but that's maybe a decent way to go, but.
Maybe take more than one meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll figure out how to tackle that. I just see that, I just, every time I have a meeting, it's tick, 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 and[1679.01] I just see that, I just, every time I have a meeting, it's tick, 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 and mays approaching, and you have warrant closing deadlines, and everything is like...
Yeah.
You know, as much as we try to plan ahead, it's just everything, there's just so much to, so much to look at. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to the assistant town administrator, unless Keith wants to talk. All right, go ahead, go ahead, bye, thank you.
So what's the answer, Bonnie?
I get my one.
Turn it in next, Tuesday night.
I'm going to start with the fiscal 2015 budget update and do the capital after.
Okay.
For the operating budget, again, we're looking at an operating budget supported by recurring revenues, not one-time revenues, which we typically use for capital. So in light of that, we're currently looking at about a $434,000 deficit for fiscal '15. And there are a lot of assumptions that I'm going to go through. This is my draft at a plan. This has not been voted on by the finance committee or the school committee. And so they're, they're my assumptions and my recommendations to start the process off. So I would expect that, you know, at the next meeting, the joint meeting, there'll be a lot of discussion by the other boards. So I want to qualify that upfront. So we're looking at a couple of different scenarios. We planned for a level staffing budget and a mission budget. The mission budget being, you know, what the department, what the appointing authority feels they really need. The level staffing was just to keep the same level of services in the next fiscal year. And again, I'm not confident at all based on that and the ability to attain a mission budget, but we just wanted to identify it.
Can I stop you?
Yeah.
Didn't we identify that we want to shoot for level staffing?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So that should be starting, that should be a starting point, okay, thank you.
There's a couple of other assumptions in here. One major one in this $434,000 deficit is in the school department budget, and again, it's my, my presentation of it. The school department at the joint meeting held with the finance committee and the board of selectmen in November identified that their budget would be $17,400,000 for next year. And with that, they would be using about $500,000 in reserves and will require a $16,900,000 appropriation, which is about a half a million dollars more than, than what they had this fiscal year. So in looking through the, the school department budget, one of the components is the use of those reserves, which includes circuit breaker funds and school choice funds. I did look on the DESE website, and the circuit breaker funding for the next fiscal, or for this fiscal year coming in is $769,000. And that funding has to be used in the next fiscal year. So it has to be fully expended. So I applied that 769 against the 17-4 budget that they had mentioned, which would reduce the appropriation instead of being 16-9, it would be 16-681. So again, that's just, that's my draft. There's going to be further discussion. There's been no, no opinion weighed in by finance committee or the school committee on, on my recommendation at this point. But that being said, that would leave alone the school choice funding for a hedge against any other unexpected expenses that might come up. There are still other circuit breaker funds available that could be expended if there were a problem. We think that the, the use of reserves, having reserves is a, is an important component of the school budget, and I, I want to applaud them for maintaining them. But that being said, that, that's how I applied the, the formula here. So if the school department appropriation were funded at the 16-9, our deficit would be $700,000, just to give you a difference. Another one of the assumptions we're using in revenue is a fairly aggressive new growth amount of $600,000. We're monitoring that, and Ken Milburn is going to come back and assist us a little bit in the next month to kind of give us an idea of what that growth figure will look like. We may need to modify it, we may need to pull it in. We have a 1% growth in local receipts, which would include excise and department fees. We also have an 11.2% increase factor for fringe and employee benefit costs. This is kind of our, our biggest driver out there, and the main component of that is health insurance. We have seen an uptick in enrollment recently, and that's why we're projecting an aggressive increase. That, that 11% isn't a premium increase, it's an increase for premium and enrollment. So, you know, we, I'm having the treasurer's department pull those figures together for the meeting that we're having on the floor. So we should have some, some better figures to go from there. Using those assumptions, you know, we have the deficit starting at $434,000 for next fiscal year escalating to almost $3 million in fiscal '19. So obviously the costs are outpacing the, the revenue streams that we have available to us now. So we need to, you know, bridge that gap by increasing the recurring revenues or reducing operating expenses, one or the other. The variables that we're monitoring, the Nishoba Tech assessment, I'm going to get that figure on the, on Friday. I have asked for it earlier to see if I can get an idea of what it will be. I believe it's going to be lower because of enrollment, but I know that they have some capital expenses that they're adding on to the assessment also. So hopefully we, we see some relief there. The health insurance premiums and enrollment, you know, hopefully our experience has been better. And in that case, we might see a, a smaller increase, but again, we're, we're working with Maya and the insurer providers now. And the state aid and state assessments. The governor's budget was bleak at best and showed almost no, you know, increase in, or no increase in local aid. And some reductions in, both in the school, like circuit breaker funding and, and a very small increase in chapter 70 funds, which was pretty much consumed by the increases in assessment. So we're, we're kind of flat. So we're keeping with a, a level funded scenario in that at this point. But we're very early in the process. I believe that maybe some future versions of the budget might be a little bit more generous, but, you know, I don't want to be overly optimistic right now.
Yeah, the speaker's come out and said that he's...
Right, yeah. He said nay-nay.
Not, not agreeing with the governor.
And we're going to continue to monitor the local receipts, which again, include new growth and excise, to tweak those numbers over the next 60 days to see if I can eke out any more sustainable revenue. The other thing that, you know, I just pointed out that's important is the collective bargaining discussions that go on over the next year or two. Just making sure that we fully vet all of the costs of, of the benefits that are negotiated, to include time off and, and anything else. And I just provided some summary documents for you to look at with detailed backups, again, showing those deficits every fiscal year. So now I've been the bearer of bad news.
But such is reality, messenger.
Your deficit is based on current revenue, so, you know, it's...
Well, and, but I have an aggressive new growth figure in there.
For this year, yeah.
A little bit steeper.
Yeah.
I have an aggressive new growth figure in there.
Yeah, I, I get it, for one year.
And the next year?
I get you.
All right. Okay. Now the good news, how about the cap plan?
Hey. You know, I, I do look at capital plan...
Unless we want to take, I'm sorry, I don't just want to take these one at a time, do I want to take questions now on this, or you want to, or it's just an update?
The budget, I think it's...
Yeah, okay, sorry.
I, I do actually look at the capital plan as, as some good news, and, and I, I think I just wanted to summarize to the board that, you know, we have been able to take the capital plan from a plan that was nothing. When I, when I arrived here, we were doing capital plans by capital exclusion votes. We didn't have funding inside the levy for capital. And through the, the policies that were in place and, you know, applying the policies and following them, we've been able to, to work in a significant, what I think is a significant amount of money inside the levy, capture the debt service that was rolling off and use it for capital improvement. So we've eliminated the, the process of doing capital exclusions. We haven't done them since 2009. There is over a million dollars annually now that's being spent on capital improvements. That's from the retired debt service that we've been able to capture. There's still $900,000 annually that we're paying the debt service on old capital improvements that we did. But, you know, I think that that's an accomplishment that the board, you know, needs to recognize. You know, we weren't here 10 years ago. So, so that's important to say. That being said, the bad news is we have a lot more capital than we have funding. So in the fiscal 2015 capital plan, there's just about $3 million in requests compared to, and, and how that compares to the fiscal 2014 that we funded, we funded $1,004,000 inside the levy. That included multiple different funding sources. And it included an appropriation into the capital stabilization fund, which doesn't go necessarily for an improvement, it's an improvement for later. Basically, out of this fiscal year, of the $3 million in requests, we can support just under $1,004,000. The way that that shakes out is $820,000 from undesignated fund balance, which we had previously, previously estimated at 780, but we've been able to update that. And the funding from the debt service that's been retired, the accumulated funding inside the levy is $551,000 for fiscal '15. So we've updated all of our debt service calculations. And then we have $4,000 that comes out of the park and rec revolving fund for their vehicle lease. So that, that's $1,00375. So that, that's...
More.
You know, it's more every year, again, as that debt service rolls off and we're able to use that. We still have $3 million in requests. So what I did, this is my stab at a capital plan. So I am fully aware that, you know, the finance committee and the board of selectmen is going to, you know, look at this and, and maybe pull things out and change things up. But it's just a starting place for you guys to be able to start looking at it. As a reminder, anything that you borrow for inside the levy impacts next year's capital available funds. So if you say we're going to borrow, you know, $1 million, that takes at least $100,000 out of next year's available funds, because now I have to, I have to pay some of that debt service down. So what I've tried to do is manage the borrowing and try and pick some items that we need to fund, some items that we, I think that the department's identified as important, and then the facility issues we need to address. So the draft plan that I have here is a total of $1,00977,529. The way that I have it accomplished here is there's $600,000 targeted for debt issuance for the fire station. It's identified as a priority. I want to caution, it's not necessarily in this fiscal year, it could be in next fiscal year, it could be whenever the board decides that it's important to, to do the fire station, but that's an item that I've got on the radar for borrowing. So.
But during our, excuse me, during our last discussions, I thought that it was rolled into the actual construction costs and as we moved out to 2016.
Yes.
So you're showing it here...
Yep.
For fiscal year 15. In actuality, the last discussion we had was based on a 2016 rollout.
It was originally requested for 15, but it's going to be, depending on the board's...
Right.
All the board's consensus.
I thought we, I thought we had said that last time when we, when we sat down.
Okay. I might have misunderstood.
Okay. That was my interpretation of the last time when we were talking in regards to this. Because I originally had said possibly, you know, paying for the design, the $600,000 upfront, and as the, the rest of the board said, well, that's half of it, that we can't do that, and we said, okay.
Yes, no, it's going to be borrowed. The discussion that we had at the last meeting was for fiscal sixth, May of 2016.
Correct.
Would be the, the time that the article appears.
Right.
So I, in my mind, I want to keep this in the plan, I want to keep this in the forefront.
But it's not fiscal year 15.
It's not pulling the trigger, it's not pulling.
It's not fiscal year 15. That's, that's all I want, you know. To, to say it here under fiscal year 15, in actuality, it's not part of, that 1.9 includes $600,000 that you can back out immediately.
Right.
The 1.3.
It's going to be the 1.3 that we have available up in, up in the other amount.
And my only comment would be that we heard from a, a large contingent of residents today about analyzing, relooking at the fire station funding. So it could be the case that this actually is a real number insofar as it's being put in here, and perhaps the fire station's coming earlier rather than being put, put off, correct?
What, what the board said last time was May of 2016.
Right.
It was sitting in the plan for this year. So I, I put it out as a borrowing that's not going, we're not going to pull the trigger on it until the board says we're ready to go, which will be May of 2016 unless I'm told otherwise.
I see, okay.
But my, excuse me, but from the finance committee, my understanding was the reason that 2016 was picked was because of the whole keeping it inside the, the limit, the borrowing. So if that weren't the priority anymore...
Right.
The dates could change again, right? Okay.
Correct.
Which is why you still have it in there for now.
It's there as a discussion point more than you, more than anything. All right, so going after that, items funded by appropriation are cash. Total $1,00377, which is a few thousand dollars over what I identified as available funding, but I'm trying to back into the number as best I can. And what I've identified by department are the items that were prioritized again by the department heads as being important. So in the police department, I have $153,723 in items. Vehicle replacements that were scheduled. The deputy chief did reduce the fleet request. I think he, he had originally four cars, he pulled it down to three. That includes the interceptor unmarked, the vehicle maintenance of $6,000 for the tires, and the public safety radio maintenance. Again, this is the one that covers a significant amount of infrastructure. Under the fire department, we have $96,430. And again, this is my list, it's, you know...
Right.
So I put in the major equipment and repair, which covers the major apparatus. The UHF radio system upgrade, this is the final component of the project that's been underway. The protective clothing replacement to start the annual program to replace a certain number of turnout gear. And the command vehicle replacement, this is for a, the replacement of the chief's 2008 vehicle. And then I stopped there. And then under the highway department, I have $161,000, major equipment and repair, same thing, the major apparatus, a dump truck replacement for a 2004, 10-year-old vehicle, front deck mower for $25,000, an infield groomer for $21,000, and an asphalt roller. This one, I, I might want some board discussion, that there was some discussion of the, the paver versus the roller. I took it in the order of priority that it was presented from the highway department, but I know that I think Mr. Knox, who mentioned maybe the paver would be better.
Sidewalk paver?
Yeah.
We talked about, yeah.
They're about the same amount of money, so it wouldn't impact the plan that much. But, but that, that can be something that you guys decide. In the school department, I, I went through and as best I could, so this is, I, I am not a facilities, you know, study expert, but I looked through the plan that was presented by EMG and tried to figure out what items were included in the capital plan and pulled them out as being funded because I funded them later. So the iPads and carts, this is a, a part of a lease, so this is the, I believe it's the final year. Maybe not. I think it's the final year, I need to check that. Shaker Lane Univents, it's in the facility study, but it was in the original plan, it's part of their ongoing maintenance. So I, I zeroed it out, but kept it there just to kind of keep it in the, in the light. Shaker Lane General Building Maintenance, the items that were identified as part of that were included in the facility plan, so I, again, zeroed it out, but just wanted to show that those things will be done. Technology computer replacements, $65,000, this is part of their annual replacement program. Technology to upgrade the network infrastructure and firewall switchings. Security upgrades, I believe that the school department had a, a security study done, and these are part of the recommendations for improvements. General building maintenance, again, it, the items that were called out in there looked like they were addressed in the facility study, so I zeroed it. Shaker Lane School Network Technology for $25,000, again, for the network infrastructure and switching. The Wi-Fi technology at Shaker Lane for $25,000. High school roof over administrative area, I couldn't really, I, I saw the high school roof in the plan out a few years, but I don't know that they identified that there was some damage. So I left it in there to, to keep it on the radar. And maybe PMBC can look at that. The Shaker Lane hot top looked like it was included in the facility study for repairs to hot top areas, but I, I asked the school committee to look at it and make sure that they're the right areas. And hot water heaters were also included in the facility study. So under general facilities and, and infrastructure, I, I just plopped in the number of the $451,000. So I know we need to go through probably the three years of, of data, 2013, 14, and 15, and pick maybe $451,000 out of those that can be accomplished.
Yeah.
Maybe more, maybe less, you know. But that's what's in here, just as a holding place. Town Hall HVAC, again, was included in the facility study, so I, I zeroed it, took it out. Major equipment and repairs, I zeroed it out for town hall too, because it was included. The fire station modular building, that's $6,000 for the lease for that addition. Shattuck Street exterior and flooring repairs, it was also included in the facility study, so I zeroed it. Technology upgrades, $10,000 to be expended by the IT department. Nancy's done a lot of work on this, and she's been able to work with the light department and other areas to try and find some additional funding. So this went from like a $60,000 item to a $10,000 item, so that's really a big savings. Recreation, major equipment and repairs, this was the article that the, the committee came and spoke to the board about a few weeks ago, along with the Long Lake Boat House and the Long Lake Beach Playground. And then I have other items, the recreation vehicle lease, which is funded out of their account. The library furniture, which is an ongoing maintenance program for the trustees to replace those. The transitional services for the assessing department at $25,000 for vendor services for one year. And the master plan update, this is again, a holding place for $100,000. I, I don't know that it's going to be adequate, they're trying to tweak that number. And then I have the list of the unfunded items, so that you can kind of now take a look through and figure out what, you know, what's a priority, if I've got something that is near and dear and you want to move. I don't know if you want me to walk through all of those.
No.
I don't want to bore you any more than I have.
So...
I've got a question.
All freezers. So...
Left out is the COA mill site. When do we see that as being the possibility of being funded?
I have, in, in every year, I have requests in excess of the available funding. So I think it would need to, you know, if the board feels that that's a priority, then, you know, we'll have to kick something out that equals, you know, the 140. I did look in the, in the plan, and I didn't see those items in the facility plan, I think because they're improvements, and they looked at just strict maintenance of the existing facility, so.
And let's not forget, we, you know, we put $196,000 in the stabilization fund, so if we make it a priority, there is $196,000 sitting in that stabilization fund to help out the COA. So, and that's a two-thirds vote at town meeting, I believe? Two-thirds vote to move that, so that's still an option we have.
And I think there was also the discussion of, of, you know, is, is this going to be the main site for a senior center, you know, for some period of time?
Right. Once we start spending that money, they're there for a while.
Yeah, the answer, the answer will be self fulfilling if you...
The answer, the answer will be self-fulfilling if you...
Yeah, yeah. Right. One thing that I would like to see on the next update is each one of these, some of these we're stuck, we, not stuck, but we're contractually obligated to do, like the iPad carts.
Yep.
So I'd like to see some of those things that, you know, I don't know, you want to highlight them, make them a different color, just put a symbol next to them, but...
I just put, you know, contractually obligated.
Some, somewhere, just put a symbol on those.
Yeah, there's not that many. There's, you know, the vehicle lease for the park and rec, which is funded by their fees.
Yeah, that's fine. But I'm saying, just so we can call it out rather than ask you every time.
I think those really are, that and the Fire Department...
Univents.
No, that's...
They're paid?
That's paid annually. It's, they replace like two or three a year.
Right. But that's something we got pretty much, that we have to do that. You said contractually. Right, contractually, yeah, okay. Something we do, those, those, those items we do, we replace police cars every single year. We replace univents every single year. But the univents is a program.
That was one of the few...
Right.
Maintenance programs.
Right.
We've been able to religiously keep and fund.
So you want to see items that are contractually obligated by lease agreements and items that we have traditionally funded annually?
There you go.
Okay, they are listed in the top...
I, I know, but I can't pick out all the time every one of them. And then, you know, yeah, and then the things that the departments identified as, we must have these, like they need new tires, you know, things like that, yeah.
Right. They're all in there.
And is, is this something that would be relevant, rather, should we share this with the Finance Committee before the February 4th meeting, so that we have, you have? Okay, I didn't see on this memo that it had been shared.
I'm sure Finance Committee gets all this, every time, yeah.
It was just to us?
No, it's...
Oh, sorry, Cece? Never mind.
I'd like to follow up on something that Joe just said. The money for the COA kitchen. I'm a little puzzled why it didn't make it into the list, because unlike some projects where we're replacing something that they could get by with for another year, this is a safety and code compliance thing to the most vulnerable population we have in the community. And so I, to me, is my thought that that needs to find a way to get taken care of sooner rather than later, because it's a liability to us. And, and it's who, who those folks are. And they've been asking for this for a while, and they originally tried to get this done in a more bootstrapped method of, of just getting things done, and it works out when you have all those codes you've got to comply with and prevailing wage, you've got to do the project balloon. I understand that. But it is a safety issue, and I think safety ought to be a pretty high priority.
If, if the, the board had mentioned, wouldn't PMBC was here to get a group together to, to look at those items? And maybe that...
Well, I think, I think what Jeff was saying was you, you're just getting to that point where you can even put out the bid, because you weren't even ready for that point. Isn't that correct with your, on money or updates, I believe?
Yeah, well, we've got a good handle on what it would cost because of the information we went, everything we went through on it.
Right.
Pretty confident in that, that cost. And just to give you a little history back on that, it started out as replacement of, like, it stole some basic stuff in there. When it came down to it, there were some code issues. Then it got really blown out of proportion after the, we have the hurricane with the poles fell down in front of the police station and whatnot, and we lost power in town, and there was a meeting to look at turning other buildings into shelters, because the police station was in a bad place, just a lot of things. And the, this building came up as a potential shelter. And with that, the kitchen project grew to, do we need to do, you know, should we be doing bathrooms? That got thrown into that potential generator here, making it a full shelter. And at that, you know, we just do as we're asked, and it got way out of control, but we did as we were asked, and it brought the price up to like $220,000. Well, we don't need to do all these bathrooms over. We do have code compliant bathrooms within the area. We pared it down to the $140,000. We got it down to the sinks that are necessary, the ansels, fire suppression system, a few other things in there, plus some stuff that if you're going to do a job, you're going to do it right and put it all in there. So for $140,000, I think you're getting what you need, you know, we're not out of control on it, and it's time. This is a project that should be done.
I agree. It's, it's good to hear that, after you put all that time and effort, that that 140 is your number. So I guess that was my main question, was the three or four years we've been talking about the COA and doing the work down there, that, that's a good number. So, and I agree, it's got to get done.
So we should try to move it up in the priority?
So I think you have some direction? We have a stabilization fund there specifically for something like this. I don't know where you're going to cut money, but if we can, I think the board's direction is to get that in there.
Well, I think if we can get the PMBC to look at that with the other building issues that need to be addressed, and I mean, I have $450,000 earmarked right now in here for building issues. I, I know that there's, you know, $2 million in building issues that we need to address, maybe including that as part of this discussion.
We could cut the salaries for the selectmen. People are overpaid anyway.
Do not start a vicious rumor that we get paid...
So we're just not paying to be a fraud, is that what you're saying now?
There is no payment.
Oh.
I'm not getting mine!
The free trash bags aren't enough?
I don't get those either.
The payment of love from the citizens. Yeah, oh, yeah. All right.
But I get the message, so.
All right, all right, good.
Thank you, Ronnie.
All right. Snow and ice? You going to start your deficit spending?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next. Roadway Improvement Plan?
Need a boat, I'm going to...
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, subsection 31D to approve incurring expenses in excess of the available appropriation for snow and ice removal fiscal year 2014.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. Roadway, do we want to keep going, Roadway Improvement Plan, and...
This is just going to be a quick update.
All right.
We're just letting you know that we will be coming back probably in the next meeting or so with an engineering estimate to do New Estate Road. That is the next road in the roadway plan. We currently have two other roads in the design phase, and we'll hopefully be going out to bid on those soon in the spring. Both of those are, let's see, Harvard?
Neshoba.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Harvard's almost done.
Almost.
Yeah. So there's a lot in process. New Estate, you know, is estimated to be, you know, a million eight, a million nine. Okay, it's an expensive road, so, you know, the engineering will be expensive on it.
New Estate and Neshoba. Can we get, one, one thing about this, Jim, I know, sorry, can we get notices to the people on there that they, about the cut? Remember, we had the complaint about someone not knowing they had cut. Is it worth notifying the residents of the, that you can't cut into these after they're paved?
Oh.
So that they know if they need any utility work? I mean, it's one in a hundred chance that it's going to happen, but...
It happens.
It happened. So maybe it's, you know, is there something that we can look at? Is that, we should do it? Don't you do your neighborhood meetings? I mean, you did that at the Neshoba Road?
I mean, we're going to be sending one out for New Estate, and I think we have a meeting that's going to be coming up on the 20th. We could put it in that.
Yeah.
Because it's going to all the upholders.
So, I'm sorry, I just finished the, the plan, since the plan's been adopted, we've done about $8 million in roadway repairs. Some of it was funded through the state grant for Goldsmith Street, and borrowed, you know, just over $1 million for the water on Goldsmith, and then 3.7 million from town funds. We are going to go forward with an additional borrowing authorization for, inside the levy for the $1 million that we had planned for, to finish these major roads that we're working on right now. And then things should smooth out a little bit in the outward years, because these are a more planned plan.
We have a construction date for Neshoba? Season?
Still working on permits.
Yeah. Okay.
So this plan is working, just like it was supposed to?
It is. I mean, it takes a lot of tweaking and modifying, but it's working.
Mr. Clerk?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'll do it. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve amendments to engineering contracts with Green International Affiliates, Inc., of Act of Mass, Number 1, extending the April 1st, 2012 contract for bid and construction phase services for Great Road, Route 119, roadway and traffic signal improvements through October 1st, 2014, and 2, extending the August 14th, 2012 contract for the design of Neshoba Road improvements through December 2014.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Thank you, Fincom. Oh, they look like they're heading out now. Not sticking around?
Yeah, no. Done.
All right. Housing production plan. Take it away.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, I announced that MAPC was awarding us $10,000 in so-called DLTA assistance towards a $20,000 scope for updating the housing production plan. Tonight, we have the, forming the agreement with MAPC, including the, the $10,000 in DLTA assistance, and I would ask that the board vote to, vote to approve that. I also wanted to suggest that we consider expanding the membership of the Housing Committee, which is going to be the main entity that's working on this project. Where, originally, we had four, five members. We're now down to four, although the one that, although Barbara, who was not able to stay on the Housing Committee, is now in the Housing Authority, and is going to be very busy with housing. But I think that, given the nature of what this plan does, it would be important to have representation from this board at least.
I'm on that other one, let's...
And the, and as well as the Planning Board, and perhaps the Zoning Board of Appeals, which, you know, of our, frankly, if you look at our committees, the EBA probably deals with housing and housing production more than any other committee. So my suggestion would be that you consider expanding the scope, inviting, you know, one member each from those three committees, including yours, to, to also serve on the Housing Committee. I think it will, we're going to need some, it's going to be a very busy group. This is a, you know, finite period of time. It's not going to be forever, but I think over, say, between now and the fall, there's going to be a very important set of things going on, and I think it would be important to have us all engaged in that process, so...
Great idea. Who's going to do it?
Not me.
Not me, until three Hendersons gets done, I, I get the parade down, recent funds.
Well, and you and I just got requested...
Well, I thought I'd ask.
What's that?
Looks like Jim. Looks like you're wide open, because Alex and I are on the, that new subcommittee with AgCom and...
Yeah, how often does that really meet?
Well, we're developing policy for agricultural, you know, land, which is agricultural in town, so it's...
That was meant to be a joke. I'm sorry if it didn't come across.
Hey, we've not met once, but we're going to really ramp up soon, I'm sure.
We're going to be busy real quick.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's Jim.
Excuse me? Yeah?
We're comfortable with that?
That sounds like... Excuse me? Please take one step for me.
Go ahead.
Okay, you can, you've obviously made the decision, so make the, make the motion.
To execute a contract with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC, for planning and meeting facilitation services relative to updating Littleton's housing production plan, including a proposed scope of services under the District Local Technical Assistance, DLTA. Secondly, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to expand the membership of the Housing Committee to include one member from the Board of Selectmen, nominated Jim Carr, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals designated by each board.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
And when does Housing Committee meet next?
Sometime in February.
There you go. There you go.
We don't have, we don't have minutes.
At a date that's convenient to the members. A date and time.
When do we have to negotiate?
All right.
A year from...
And then also, so, next item is executive session, so you lucky people get to go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I want to mention that because it's something that's connected with the weekend, has to do with my extended family owning a commercial piece of property, and that Omni will be representing us in the sale of that property.[1716.65]